2007. We are here in John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 370 in City Hall, 340, excuse me, 340 City Hall, and we meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. here in Council Chambers, except for the first Friday of the month in which we are in Van Nuys City Hall. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Council Members Alarcon, Gruel, Parks, Perry, Rosenthal, Smith, and Zine. We are still awaiting a quorum. Council Members Weezer and Council Member Wesson are expected, if they can make their way down to Council Chambers as soon as possible. And we also await in Council Member Labange and Weiss, who are excused to arrive a little bit late today. We are broadcast live on Channel 35, L.A. City View, through the city's cable system and rebroadcast in the evening. We also are available online through our city's webpage at www.lacity.org. We also can access live streaming video there, as well as video-on-demand feature of our past council meetings. And lastly, you can always call in on Council Phone, which is a service of Information Technology Agency, at 213-621-CITY, where you can listen to our Council Committee meetings, or our Council meetings as well. With that, we invite folks to speak on items that have been agendaized for public comment, and if you want to fill out a speaker card in the back and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, we'll make sure to get you on the speaker list. Half of the items, more or less, have already had public hearings, so they are not required to do so here in full council. That's happened in committee. But for items on the agenda for which there has not yet been a public hearing, any member of the public is entitled to speak to us. We also have general public comment for items that are not on the agenda, but are nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles City Council. If you'd like to be heard for general comment, please do fill out a speaker card in the back and give that to the sergeant-at-arms. With that, Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hawn, Weasel, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present on a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Smith seconds, without objection, unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Rosenthal seconds, without objection. The two will be approved. Next order of business?
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute agendaized.
Okay. Mr. Zine, will you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If I can ask everybody in Council Chambers to please rise for salute to our nation's flag.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 11 to July 6.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing item number 11 to the 6th, you said, of July?
That's correct.
Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and continue 11 till then. Next items?
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 4, street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to July 17.
Okay. So any objection to opening those hearings and continue to the 17th of July? Seeing none, so ordered. Next item?
Item 5 is a building in safety lean, notice for public hearing.
Okay. Do we have any cards on file? Seeing none, we'll open and close the public hearing. And anybody wishing to call 5 special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items 6 through 31 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 6 through 8 are commission reappointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes. 6 and 7, let's hold on the desk, and number 8, the mayor's office has asked to continue for two weeks. There's no objection. We'll move that. Yes.
Call item 13 special?
13 special for Ms. Perry. So 6 and 7 special, no objection to continuing item 8. Two weeks is July 10 will be, why don't we make that that Friday, since we're going to be in San Pedro then, so that would be, I believe, the 13th? Okay. Continue that to the 13th without objection. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Number 19 for Mr. Rosenthal.
19 for Mr. Rosenthal. Okay. By Mr. Smith. Any other specials, colleagues? 6 through 31. Mr. Rosenthal, you're good?
We did 19.
Yeah, we got 19 up there. Okay.
31, but you're not there.
Not quite. Oh, yeah, we are on 31, actually, too. You want 31?
31.
Okay. Mr. Rosenthal for number 31 as well. And on the balance, let's go ahead and, oh, yep. Oh, we're waiting for the computer. Hold on one second. We're right now between 6 and 31. Item 6 to 31. Okay, please hold for technical difficulties. Let's move on to the next batch, and I'll take these by hand. We're 32 to 57, is that correct?
Yeah. Next items are items 32 through 57, are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration, and item 32 is a commission reappointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk. And we do have speaker cards for 46 and 47. See if we have other ones. We have 48.
You got 46?
As well. The others, we will go ahead and open and close the public hearings on those. Any other specials, colleagues? This is 32 through 57.
You got 46?
46. It was called special for cards, yeah, from public. No other specials. We will put those in the batch when our software comes back as well. Next item?
On the supplemental agenda, item 58 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 58 special? Mr. Zine?
58.
All right. Call it special for Mr. Zine. Next items?
Items 59 through 63 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay.
59.
59 for Mr. Zine. And let's see if we have cards on any of the others. We have card for 60, sorry, 63. We also have cards on 59. So we'll call 63 special for cards from the public as well. The other items, we will go ahead and open and close the public hearings on those. So we are awaiting our software. Do we have the ability to take the votes? I guess we'll hold the ordinance on the desk anyway, just in case we have 12 members. So we'll hold those special, which means we have quite a few. And let's hold 9 and 10 special on the desk as well. We still awaiting software? Okay. All right. Mr. Smith, in the meantime?
Forthwith?
We don't have 12 members yet, so I'm going to hold 12 to see if we get 12 members today. And if we do pass that on the first reading, we'll send it forthwith. Thank you. Okay. Well, while we are awaiting votes on the balance, we will go ahead and take up our two commissioners. Oh, sorry. Why don't we do public comment first while we're waiting? That'll give us some time to get our software back as well. Now it's time for general public comment. I'd like to start out in Van Nuys. Our first speaker is Donna Perman. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for saying my name right. I am Donna Perman, the newly-elected president in the Eric Garcetti Club. I read on the internet one time, oops, I read that Councilman Garcetti, that Garcetti was named the hottest councilman. I like to say it's still true, though Councilwoman Weezer could also have that title, too. And thank you, Councilwoman Weezer, for the support of the bus riders.
Don't tell them why.
What would the C.R.A., what would the C.R.A. call the city council, the best patsies, our greatest pushovers, our best buddies? How about the city attorney? Maybe we should all drive without car insurance, like his wife does. Maybe we should all drive without a current driver's license, like his wife does. After all, it's such a pain renewing them. I couldn't believe when he allowed her to drive a sealed vehicle on non-city business. She had an accident, and he tried upon and off to us till he got caught. Barry, he paid back the city. We should take a sealed city vehicle away and voker driver's license. Better yet, we should throw him out and put in Zuma Dog. Speaking of city vehicles, I heard the city council uses their vehicles to go on vacation. Maybe Councilman Zine and councilmen are spending too much time thinking about Las Vegas and Linda Reseda go to hell. We need the C.R.A. to save, we don't need C.R.A. to save the day. We don't need them. Our own neighborhoods can come up with an answer. We need small mom-and-pop shops, small bookstores, thrift shops, craft shops, more greenery and flowers to make Reseda look nice and get out the gang. C.R.A. can't do that. I live in two councilman districts, Councilman Cardenese and Councilman Zine, both are nice men, very friendly. My boss is in Garcetti's district. But that doesn't take away the damage the city council does in approving too many fee waivers and betting with the C.R.A. and big developers. Can't you use your own money to campaign with? Maybe like sell lemonade, sell lemonade? If you're a good councilman, and surely people will vote for you. Let the record speak for itself. What have you done that makes you proud? Let that be known, like Councilman Weezer. Let people know you helped desmodify the bus fare hike. When your term is up, move up. How about Mayor Garcetti? Need I say more?
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sharon Brewer, also out in Van Nuys. And then we'll come back here, and Zuma Dog will be our first speaker in Council Chambers. Good morning, Ms. Brewer.
Hi. I'm Sharon Brewer, Encino Neighborhood Council election, June 28, two days away. Facts, still no response from Carol Farb, 6/18/07 email postponement of Encino's election. Two, still no response from Dunn's public, my request, public records request for Encino's Dunn approval election procedures since 6/8/07. Three, we have a new IEA as of June 21, 2007, one week before Encino's election. New IEA's last election had either 13 or 15 challenges. Four, Encino's election material still needs to be retrieved from the old IEA, including vote-by-mail ballots. Encino's June 27, 2007 meeting has on the agenda that they need to approve the new IEA, and that the ENC understands and accepts that the final official certified canvas will be delayed, and the challenge period won't start until the vote-by-mail ballots are identified and counted as part of the final official certified canvas. Just to let you know, there's getting feedback. I can hear Councilman Zine speaking. The other thing is that the, oh, thank you. Also, the Encino Neighborhood Council election needs to be delayed with the problems with the non-approval of the election procedures, the new IEA, who's coming in one week before the election, and material not being available to anybody because of the old IEA, and that basically there has been no outreach to the public regarding this election. And I started sending emails to Dunn back in March, asking about the status on the election procedures, on Encino's election procedures. Please, somebody listen. This election needs to be postponed. It's day after tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. And if I could ask folks in Council Chambers, we have a number of conversations going on in the audience, as well as on this side of the rope. If we can please keep our conversations to a minimum, or if folks can please move their conversations outdoors of the chambers, so that we can hear public comment. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. After that is Vern Clyde Gammon Jr.
Yes, good morning, City of Los Angeles. My name's Zuma Dog. Welcome to City Council, everybody who's here today. If you'd like to find out what's really going on in the City of Los Angeles, go to zumatimes.com, because in case you haven't noticed, you can't find out any local news in L.A. Times, at least nothing that affects you. They've been bought and sold by City Hall. ZumaTimes.com. Now, can I have your attention, please? City Council, can I have your attention, please? By a show of hands, Tom, Jan, a question, please, please stop talking.
If you could please address the council in general, thank you.
Okay, Eric, can you ask Jan and Tom to stop talking?
Could you please address the council in general, please?
What? By a show of hands, which council members have not discussed the upcoming presidential council elections behind closed doors with other council members? By a show of hands, we have Alarcon, we have Zine, we have Rosenthal.
This is not a question and answer, period. This is public comment.
Mr. Dog, this is not a question and answer, sir. If you could give us your comments, we'd be happy to accept them. Thank you.
You're allowed to ask a question for a simple response by a show of hands, and I'd like, the question was, by a show of hands, which council members?
Sir, there's a second warning, please. If you could address your comments, give us your comments. Thank you.
Okay, you want to address the comments? How about my comments, or don't vote for Eric Garcetti for president. This council is in disarray. It's a laughingstock. It's a joke. It's fodder for talk show. It's fodder for everything. Get this man. I want all 14 other council members to vote against Eric Garcetti, and I hope when you're having the seven, I'm allowed to speak against what I want.
You absolutely are, but I'd ask you to please keep your voice down pursuant to the council rules.
Where's the decibel meter, Eric? This is the volume that you're allowed to speak.
Mr. Dog, we've been very respectful of your right to speak here, and you can say anything you want, but please address us in a respectful manner pursuant to the rule that's right there on the podium. That's it. Sir, please address us respectfully. Now you can continue.
Now I continue. You lost all my time, and I'd like to say that the volume I am speaking in is not a goddamn violation of any law that you made.
All right, sir. That's your last warning today. That's your last warning. Our next speaker is Vernon Clyde Gammon Jr.
Good afternoon. My name is Vern Clyde Gammon Jr. I'm a fourth-generation San Diegan, and my father's family came here in 1849. I'd like to preface my remarks by saying, two of my cousins are married to Mexicans. One of my cousins is married to a Chinese girl and lives in Taiwan. Two of my cousins are married to Mexican Filipinos, two of my, no, my nephews. And my youngest son is married to an Italian, and more tolerant than that you can't get. I have been going around to Skid Row. I've never seen so many civil rights and constitutional rights violated in my entire life in the name of people making money that nobody kicks down. When you get in '08 and you are transported to a jail, you were '07 when you were pulled over. The city attorney knows that. And to me, that says something about somebody was acting responsibly when they got in their car and drove away at '07, not irresponsibly. I'm tired of hearing this DUI. I know how it works. When you're transported, your blood alcohol keeps going up. I have never, my grandfather, after he fought in the Spanish-American War in Cuba with Teddy Roosevelt, came here and helped build the railroads going to, from Long Beach to Canada. I had a cousin who worked on the L.A. Tons, and a cousin who, well, I'm not going to get, I'm almost out of time. I've never seen so much racism and sexism in a city in my entire life. And command, control, and planning is the police department's head, the chief. That's his responsibility.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Ron Ingram. After that will be Armando Edmond.
Good morning, Mr— can you hear me? Unfortunately, now, I'm in the last stages of cancer at Kent Norris. Mr. President, you know you represented the district in which I lived after Jackie Goldberg. I'm going to disclose something now pertaining to Tom LeBonce and Sybil Brand. I have reluctant—I came here this morning with the idea of releasing to you the names of the individuals and the corporations and the CEOs that gave me all that money to care the homeless when the city council was suing the board of supervisors, and they were suing the city. It was my pleasure to embarrass you by having CBS come out here and cover this thing, and I had David Roberti standing there handing out blankets. Now, Tom was one of my neighbors, as you know, Eric. He had never met Sybil Brand, so one day he was on his bicycle going by my house. He saw her go in. He went home and called me and said, "Did I see Sybil Brand?" Just, "Yes, she's here for breakfast. Come on over and join us." So he thought he'd have to get dressed. I said, "No, just the way you are, but bring your camera." Sybil's here for something that most people will never know about her life, and that is a gentleman whose wife had Alzheimer's and was in the hospital—you know who I'm talking about. And he himself was in a wheelchair. They needed money. So Tom joined us, and we went to this house, and he was selling his wife's possessions. Now ordinarily, when this is done, they were open, and he already advertised it. Wonderful Sybil. She sat down and said, "I want it all. How much do you want? Here's the check." And he said, "Mrs. Brand, there's some very wonderful pieces that I have set aside." She said, "Okay, I will be back with another check. Put a reserve on them."
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Now, Tom, that's a sight of Sybil that you saw—
Thank you.
—that no one else has ever seen.
It's very nice to see you, Ron. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. Many of our thoughts are with you. Armando Herman is next. And then Oscar Johnson will be the next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Residents of Los Angeles, I'm here again to mention the redevelopment agencies that are taking their precedence in Los Angeles. Are you tired of these developers and their conduct? You should be, because they're not telling you about the hidden costs that's going to go to you, the taxpayers. Each of us are affected by this, and we must take a stance. It's a shame when you have a developer come into your community and decides to take advantage of you, the taxpayers, by increasing taxes. How? Simply by saying, "We're offering you this. We're offering you that." But that's not—the case here today. The case is, it's wrong. Developers, you are welcome. There's nothing wrong in redevelopment in Los Angeles, but do it in a way that we could all benefit from. Not in a way that's hidden behind closed doors, but bring it to the public. We want to hear. We are the taxpayers. We represent Los Angeles. We pay for your positions, and we ask that there be a little more loyalty to the citizens of Los Angeles. I've been in activism now for the last five years, and I've seen nothing better come out of City Hall. And it's a darn shame that, in my youth, I have to come here and belittle certain people whose names not to mention Jack Weiss, who's taken advantage of the people in Sherman Oaks and other people in our community. Again, I'm going to raise the issue about Sears on Olympic and Soto. Give back to the community what is deserving before you tax us. It's not right. It's not fair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Oscar Johnson?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Oscar Johnson, proactive for the City of Los Angeles.
Sir Johnson, could you get your— pull that up so we can hear you a little bit?
Speaking in part of the homeless situation in Los Angeles. You know, as we stand here today, entering this 21st century, political— politics and races are still an issue we don't want to talk about. But anyway, we have been eliminated. African-American people have been eliminated through the due process of our political situation. It seems as though our politicians, they get the resources, and they spread all the resources back to the African-American community. And we are people in Los Angeles. We are dying physically. We are dying economically. And we are dying from dignity, from our political government that's supposed to represent us through this political thing. And we were talking about these illegal immigrants. Illegal immigrants. I think all immigrants should go back to their country and come here legal. But I see how we started this illegal immigrant thing during the Day of Prohibition through the Catholic Church and hadn't stopped yet, because we invite peoples over here to be a part of our racketeering and our corruption, to be extended through them. And that's a very discouragement and very unacknowledged through our civil liberties and the civil rights of the people that live here, that we don't have ownership in our own community. We have too many liquor stores in Los Angeles. From immigrants don't live in Los Angeles. A lot of our liquor stores should be closed in the city of Los Angeles, and our communities should be given back to the African-American people. We have too much government in our life, too much of Walmart, too much of Starbucks, too much of fast food, and the citizens don't own anything in Los Angeles. Only thing we can do is ride around and find cars and live in a fine home, but we don't have any type of business of our own. We can't employ anyone. And as I look at Skid Row on a daily basis and yearly basis, our merit gives millions of dollars, but don't spend anything in the direction of the homeless to uplift the homelessness. And our environment down there is very destructive, very often debride this stuff in Los Angeles, where people defecate and do things all over the city, and we happen to smell that stuff. The environmental hazard, the environmental help is destroying us. But one thing about it, that air takes from Los Angeles to Beverly Hills and Santa Monica covers the city, and y'all have to breathe it too.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. If I can ask folks one more time, please, to take their conversations outside, or please try to keep them to a minimum here so we can hear our public comment. Michael Carrion is our next speaker, and then Candido Morris will come after that. Michael Carrion, is he here? If not, we'll pass on Mr. Carrion and Mr. Morris. After that will be Michael Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmember. Thank you very much. I'd like to really thank the young lady back there from Westlake, one of the student ambassadors, Christine. Thank you very much for all your help. Let's give her a big hand. She's doing a lot of work back there. Saturday, I want to talk about a wonderful event. I know we're not supposed to talk directly to the councilperson, but, Mr. Smith, you had an event— Movies Under the Stars over at the Burnson Park, park that was named after a family that's given so much to this community. But it was absolutely wonderful to see people from everywhere, families, young families, seniors, the popcorn that was provided, the movie. It was just a great atmosphere to watch a park and watch it being taken over by families and making it safe. Remember in 1993, Mr. Burnson wanted to make our park safe for all kids, and I believe this is the beginning of that. I know that you're going to take the Movie to the Stars up to other parks, and so other areas will be able to enjoy that. I also want to thank you for appointing me to the Cup Committee. I've been there since 1992. With that, I've been able to meet and greet other people from other districts, people like Kathy Powell and Alma Reeds and Jesse Samuels from Mr. Parks District. Now, there's the Watts Center, and they want to name that park after someone who's a city employee. And there's nothing wrong with that. When somebody gives to this city, whether it's a city employee or somebody from the community, I think the community should be given that opportunity to speak out and name that facility after. So I hope that those in that area will allow that name of Dorothy Sampson to be placed on the Watts Center, because here is someone that has given so much to the community. And we all in all our district have met people like that. And again, thank you very much for that wonderful time on Saturday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris. And next is Michael Hunt. After that will be Reginald Brass.
And just— before he starts, just as a reminder to the public speakers, to address the council as a whole, you can refer to individual council members in the third person.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Hunt.
Good evening, City Council. Mr. City Attorney, that might not be right, what you're telling the people. I'm going to file a 1983 on what you got here. Ninety percent of the stuff that Rocky does is illegal. We all know that, including his babysitting. Number two, we need you guys to take a vote on the 4215 tomorrow. The judge already ruled that it was unconstitutional. The best thing that you guys can do is nothing with that ordinance. We're examining it now, but just leave it as ruled from the federal judge, unconstitutional. On that note, I'm going to be leaving. But like I said, the 4215, and a lot of the stuff that Rocky does is unconstitutional and has no merit. Mr. City Attorney, you might want to check this out. In the next two weeks, I will be filing a 407 on—or 1983 on the Rules of Decorm, and it might be unconstitutional with all this stuff up here. So you just might want to check out your program. Done it before, and I'm going to gladly take on this challenge as well. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you very much. Reginald Brass is our final speaker.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Reginald Brass. I represent an organization called My Child Says Daddy. This is my first time coming down here to speak to you fine people. I just happen to have a serious problem with one of the developers in our community. I don't know if I can name the person, but it is dealing with the Martin Square. I've dealt with some 10,000 clients in the years—in the 15 years I've been in this particular development, and I feel that I had to come down here because the developer is not being fair and honest with, let's say, the people that he has to put out are intimate— by intimate domain. I've been doing business over there for the past 15 years. I have chose to leave on my own with my own money because of the way that the property is done over there is—it's a catastrophe. It's a disaster, the way that it looks over there, and I couldn't do business over there in a fair, ethical way. I also attend church in the same community that— where we're losing members because of what the developer is doing and not being fair, be it even with the contracts that I've signed with him, saying that a promise to do certain— by a certain date, and it's four months later, and it still hasn't been done. And by making numerous phone calls and numerous attempts to no avail, no one has ever gotten back to me. So I felt that I had to come down here to find out what is it that we can do, or even if I have to put up my own money, to stop this from going on for people that cannot and may not be able to afford to be able to do the things I'm able to do, because this is their livelihoods, and some people just can't afford to do what other people do in small business. But yet, we're being pushed out by this developer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your public comment today. And that closes our general public comment. We now have the computer back up and running, so we're going to go through the consent items, colleagues. If we can take the first batch of them, please.
Yes, Mr. President. The first items where a public hearing has been held, and those are items nine, 10, 12, 14 through 18, and 20 through 30.
Okay. Please open the roll. Oh, Mr. Smith, do you have any? Please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
We have 12, 14, and what was your item forthwith?
12 forthwith.
12, okay. 12 and 14 forthwith, without objection. Mr. LeBange, and then we'll come to Mr. Weiss.
14 forthwith. And just for the record, for those who came down for item 14, who supported the Pan Pacific Holocaust Museum, thank you so much. Appreciate that support there. Thank you so much. Forthwith.
Thank you very much. We will send that forthwith. And Mr. Weiss?
29.
And 29 will send forthwith as well. And thank you to the folks from—
29.
Yes, Mr. Weezer?
29.
Sorry?
55.
Okay, we're not quite there, but I will make sure we do 55 forthwith when we get there. I think we'll do all items forthwith this week, so no need to call anything forthwith at the end of the fiscal year. We'll be sending all these forthwith. Next items, please.
These are the items for which public hearings have not been held, and those are items 33 through 45.
Okay.
49 through 57.
Let's go ahead, then. Let's go ahead and open the roll on that. Close the roll.
And 60 through 62, Mr. President.
Oh, we are going to have this. And tabulate the vote.
I didn't get those. 12 eyes.
Okay, those are approved. Everything will be going forthwith, colleagues. Yes, Mr. Weiss, and then Mr. LeBange.
Mr. President, I apologize for tardiness this morning, as I was over at the Board of Education trying to organize some things. Number 23, oh, could you reconsider?
Sure.
I'd like to call that special.
Okay. Let's go ahead on item 23. Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, those are approved.
Thank you so much.
That is approved, and we'll send—that—we'll call that special for Mr. LeBange and put that in the queue. Mr. Weiss?
I just wanted to make sure that we had 47 and 59 up there for special. I think you do.
Yes, 47, 58, and 59, we're going to take together, I guess, if that's all right. We have a number of speaker cards, and I know some folks filled out speaker cards for all three. You certainly can speak on all three separately in terms of the amount of time, but if you feel free to take those up together. There's been a move to take those together before the commissioners. Is there any objection to that? If not, let's go ahead, and we'll take up 47, 58, and 59. Mr. Zion and Mr. Weiss, the makers of those motions. If you'd like to say anything at the outset, we'd be happy to—
No, I think we should the public comment, period, because I know folks have to leave. I know in particular Rabbi Cooper has to leave quickly. If you could call his card first, Mr. President.
Okay. There's no objection, we'll take Mr. Cooper out of order, and then we'll go through the rest of the cards. Welcome, Rabbi.
Morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us, and I want to particularly thank Councilman Weiss and his colleagues for supporting AB 221. Today, Iran—the regime in Iran—is a virtual ATM machine for terrorism. The former president of that country is under an arrest warrant from Interpol for the suicide bombing of the Amia Jewish Community Center in Buenos Aires in the mid-1990s that left 100 people dead and hundreds more maimed. We all know about the increasing nuclear threat from the Iranian regime against its neighbors and the threats made by President Ahmadinejad, genocidal action against the member state of the United Nations, that being the state of Israel. I think one more very important point of why AB 221 is important. We have a very significant Persian community here in California, and I know that many people are concerned about punitive actions taken that may impact their families and their communities. AB 221 is, I think, going to help bring about behavioral change in Iran, if not the change in the regime. And right now, our intelligence services have confirmed that there are full parts of the Iranian economy controlled by terrorist organizations in that country. California in general, and Los Angeles in particular, have very important economic impact in that part of the world. This is more than a mere symbolic gesture. I think that this is a vote that will be heard in Tehran, and hopefully will change the way in which the people who run that country behave vis-à-vis their neighbors and vis-à-vis their citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. What we are going to do, colleagues, is our people put cards on all three items. If you come to speak, you will speak two minutes total on the three items, if you've come and put a card for each one of them. So I'd like to— Alina Hadar.
My name is Adina Hadar. I'm a native Angelina, and I'm here to speak in support and for Agenda Items 47, 59. Now, as the gentleman speaking prior to me has made clear, Iran has acted as an ATM of terrorism. It's a clear state sponsor of terrorism, supporting Syria, Hezbollah, Iran, and even insurgencies in Iraq. But the reason that these agenda items are important for us today is not only because of the existential threat that Iran poses to democracies like Israel and the United States, to the extent that Ahmadinejad, the president of that nation, has made continuous threats of terrorism and of wiping countries such as the U.S. out of the map, as stated in its October twenty-six, two thousand and five speech. So not only do we need to support these agenda items to counteract that existential threat, but also because we are here in the city of Los Angeles, we espouse and embrace ideas of democracy. The city council meeting itself has reminded me of that very value, of the idea of free speech, freedom of religion, freedom of ethnic and cultural diversity in the expression. And this, these are values that we espouse, that we embrace here in Los Angeles, that is contradicted by the actions of the Iranian regime. And for that reason, the city of Los Angeles should take action as well, and strongly support, again, strongly support and urge this council to approve the resolutions posed by Councilmember Jack Weiss, specifically Agenda Items forty-seven and fifty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Howard Walensky.
My name is Howard Walensky. I'm a past chair of the Jewish Public Affairs Committee of California. Let me just speak to the specifics of AB two-two-one that I've worked very hard in support of in Sacramento. It is a bipartisan bill that passed the Assembly seventy-five to nothing. It has cosponsors from both sides of the aisle. Yesterday, it passed in its Senate Committee unanimously. And over time, this bill has been amended to be very focused on the energy sector in Iran. So this is a very pragmatic bill. We're really talking about thirteen to twenty foreign corporations that do business in Iran. U.S. companies are already prohibited from doing, from investing in Iran. So this is a very targeted, pragmatic, and practical bill, fulfilling the goals that the prior speakers have identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Greenfield.
Good morning, members. I'm Larry Greenfield, California Director of the Republican Jewish Coalition and a lifetime resident of Los Angeles. I'm an attorney. I've worked in the financial markets, and I've served in U.S. naval intelligence. I'm also familiar with the field of global security, risk management, and the implementation of terror-free investment strategies. Prior to preemptive military strike, many thoughtful international American leaders are promoting strategies such as regime change, support of dissidents and reformers in Iran, and leveraging economic sanctions. I paraphrase Thomas Jefferson, who once suggested that economic sanctions are a waystation between appeasement and war. I would simply state that if the international community had acted forcefully prior to World War II to resist and pressure the rising threat of Nazism, the greatest human catastrophe in human history might have been deterred. I spent some time analyzing the risk to shareholders and to the reputation of investors, be they public institutions or publicly traded companies with business ties to Iran, Syria, Sudan, North Korea, as well as with public firms that have been associated with weapons of mass destruction and ballistic missile proliferation. I believe in the feasibility of terror-free or Iran-free investment policies and screens to take out potential interests. In May two thousand and one, the Securities and Exchange Commission determined that publicly traded companies that do business in U.S.-sanctioned countries such as Iran are exposed to global security risk, even if such activities are legal and commercial in nature. It is my testimony that terror-free investing is possible at a moderate cost, and it may not have the type of negative performance forecast by detractors. I refer you to the record from the states of Illinois and Missouri and other states and municipalities that are having success with Sudan-free investing. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Andrew Lackman. Andrew will be followed by Karen Spector and Eli Lippman.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I am speaking with a somewhat partisan hat. I am the president of a group called Democrats for Israel, Los Angeles. We, along with the California Democratic Party, have been very supportive of making sure that this Iranian regime, in fact, is held accountable for its actions and its statements. Indeed, the California Democratic Party and both the U.S. Congress have passed resolutions condemning the Holocaust denial and statements that Israel should be wiped off the map by the President of Iran. But there are other reasons as well why we should support this particular, both the state legislation and the ordinance put before us today. Iran persists on cracking down on the basic freedoms that progressives hold dear. Indeed, right now, there are at least two bloggers who are currently serving a combined sixteen years of time, basically for the crime of, quote, criticizing the Ayatollah and criticizing the government. Iran is right now the second-leading executioner of children, seventeen, since two thousand, since two thousand and four, seventeen minors have been executed under their laws, including two for the mere crime of being gay. Finally, there is the lack of, there's the lack of a court system that suppresses the freedoms that we practice here in this country. At least, at least in this system and in places like Israel, if the government does something wrong, there are checks and balances. There are no checks and balances of this sort in Iran. It's a theocracy, which right now is, as we both know, has been a state sponsor of terrorism, which is why this is so important. Divestment is not something which should be undertaken lightly, and in this particular case, Iran has demonstrated that it is so willing to flout international norms, to pursue its agenda, its extremist agenda, that we have no choice but to make this sort of stand. And it is, in fact, having an effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Spector.
Hi, my name is Karen Spector. I'm here representing the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles and our donors, volunteers, and recipients of services to support these resolutions, and particularly to thank Councilman Jack Weiss for his leadership here in the city council in mirroring the actions that occurred in the Assembly in recent weeks. Iran is accelerating its nuclear development program in defiance of mandatory U.N. Security Council resolutions. Combined with its support for international terrorism, a nuclear-armed Iran would pose an unacceptable threat to the U.S. and its allies. Military force is really a last-resort response to terrorist threats, and we're not there yet, thankfully. This is a peaceful strategy and is a way to avoid the path to war. Angelinos need to be assured that their city's financial holdings are not invested in companies that provide Iran badly-needed capital, which it simply uses to advance its nuclear program. Local, state, and federal government must work together on this issue to pressure Iran economically until their efforts to acquire nuclear weapons end. We must safeguard Angelinos from these risky investments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eli Lippman, followed by Mark Paredes and Michael Mandeville.
Hello, my name is Eli Lippman. I work for the American Jewish Committee of Los Angeles, representing the thirty chapters across this country, the hundred and seventy-five thousand members of the AJC around the world. I want to thank Councilman Weiss for bringing this motion forward, as we see it is such an important, important thing for the city council and for the state to consider. Let me just quote President Ahmadinejad. "I am telling those fake superpowers that the Iranian nation became independent twenty-seven years ago, and on the nuclear case, it will resist until fully achieving its nuclear rights." He said this while a crowd chanted "Death to America." What we have here today is a case of a nuclear Iran that would endanger both regional and international peace and security, and threatens U.S. national interests, our national interests, and jeopardizes the whole international nonproliferation regime. Iran's oil and energy industry provides the major financial support sustaining Iran's aggressive regime, and billions of dollars of U.S. pension funds, as well as mutual funds, are many, are invested in foreign corporations that are most heavily involved in Iran's oil and energy sector. Already, U.S. companies are prohibited from doing business in Iran by the federal government, but foreign companies, which U.S. stockholders, like yourself, are invested in, are still doing business with this dangerous regime. It is absolutely imperative that you encourage pension funds, like the state pension funds and the local city pension funds, to divest from these companies that are heavily involved in Iran's oil and energy sector. It will, and the negative publicity, as well as the effect that this will have on their economy, may well, may very well make Iran move from the position it currently holds. So I strongly encourage you to support AB two-two-one, and I also highly encourage the city to consider divestment. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I come before you today representing the American Jewish Congress, as a resident of Brentwood and as a former U.S. diplomat in the Middle East and in Latin America. It is in all these capacities that I urge you to support all the resolutions introduced by Councilman Jack Weiss. Neither the state of California nor the city of Los Angeles has any business, doing business with the government of Iran. I'd like to focus on the nature of the government that's currently seeking nuclear weapons. It is led by a president who denies the Holocaust, seeks the destruction of a neighboring country, and is hell-bent on acquiring nuclear weapons. I am pleased that Councilman Weiss's resolution targets Iran's defense industry. One principle we were taught at the State Department when analyzing Iran is that Iran has always used, used new technologies to foment terror and to attack Americans. Let's think about it. What does Iran do with the money it receives from pension funds? It developed a car bomb in the early eighties. It used the car bomb to attack the U.S. Embassy in Lebanon and U.S. Marines in Lebanon. It also perfected the art of political kidnappings that it used against Americans in Lebanon. It then perfected suicide bombings, passed them on to Hamas, which used suicide bombings to kill Americans in Israel. I was at the embassy, we're in Israel, when a bus blew up two blocks from the embassy, killing several Americans, and thirty others. That's what Iran does with the money that it gets from pension funds. Let's also concentrate on how Hamas treats its own, how Iran treats its own people. Secretary Albright, a Democrat, in nineteen ninety-nine, listed Iran as a country of serious concern due to its human rights violations. For four years in a row, the U.N. General Assembly, which never does anything like this, has condemned the government of Iran for its human rights violations. If the General Assembly can act, why can't we? Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a state that should be allowed to develop nuclear weapons. The mullahs have sent us a message loud and clear. They believe in persecuting people, their own citizens, and in fomenting terror. We need to let, send them a message that this vibrant city, home to a large Iranian community, will not do business with the terrorists in Turban's in Tehran. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Mandeville, followed by Colin McLaughlin and Esther Renzer, I think it is.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Mandeville. I'm partnered with Doris Montrose, who has been leading the way in advocating Bill AB two-twenty-one to numerous groups around this fine state. I work in the film industry as a line producer, unit production manager, and the Directors' Guild, and I discovered by happenstance the collision between our pension fund investments and companies doing business in Iran. I was very appalled at this notion, and my first call was to a group that would frighten Osama bin Laden himself, the Teamsters. After explaining to them that pension fund investments can directly help these countries in particular, I heard a veritable thesaurus of profanity, none of which I'm sure has been heard in these hollowed halls. While liberty to me is both a business and a means of survival in a competitive film industry, and I can assure you that the deadly effects of supporting these countries is understood clearly in the film industry. The most telling response was from an accountant who said, "If these countries sponsor terrorism through the use of bombs, bullets, and hijackings, then how do we know that they have not duped these pension-invested companies with false investments, poor accounting methods, diversion of funds into dual-purpose channels, and more?" Quite simply, the targets of nine-eleven were chosen because they were symbolic, dramatic, and economic. I'm here to ask the council a few questions. One, if these terrorists sponsoring countries ignore international laws and the human rights of its very citizens, minorities, and women, then can we blindly and foolishly expect them to adhere to come clean with accounting? The cliche, the cliche is that the studios cook the books, but we want to believe these people? If we have ample evidence of poor accounting and irregularities like Enron, Global Crossing, and more, which led to the dot-com bubble, will we wait to act until the terror dot-com bubble happens? And what if the plot thickens? What if they expect us to do nothing at all, and we discover that we have given them the very rope by which they will hang us? I hope that the council, in all its guiding wisdom, can take a stand that is both enlightening and admirable. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin?
Good morning. My name is Colin McLaughlin, and I serve as the District Chief of Staff for Assemblyman Joel Anderson of California's Seventy-seventh State Assembly District in San Diego. Assemblyman Anderson is the author, of course, of Assembly Bill two-two-one, which will divest California's public pension systems from foreign companies in the energy and defense sector of, in the Islamic Republic of Iran. I come before you this morning to first thank Councilman Jack Weiss for his leadership on this critical issue, and to encourage this body to support his efforts to protect the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles. The president of Iran has stated publicly that it is his goal to attack the great Satan when referring to the United States, develop nuclear weapons, and eliminate Israel from the face of the earth. In February of this year, he took human hostages. Assemblyman Anderson and now Councilman Weiss have taken the Iranian president at his word, and they're concerned that other world leaders believe him too. Iran has put, has put itself on a collision course with the rest of the world. This directly threatens our investments in Iran by exposing them to the strong possibility of being bombed or nationalized. California investments should not be gambled on foreign-owned companies that make money by violating federal and U.N. sanctions that are currently in place in Iran. The city of San Diego, where I traveled from this morning, has given us a firsthand look at what can happen when city officials are asleep at the switch. Assemblyman Anderson, over the years, has gained a unique perspective, as he has had a front-row seat to witness the negligence of San Diego's city officials in the pension scandal. He watched elected officials, who are directly accountable to the, to the voters, shy away from their responsibility to provide oversight of risky investments and pension funding. The assemblyman has refused to take that risk, as he understands that he has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of the state of California. In addition, he would not be able to look a first responder, a teacher, or a fighter-fighter in the eye, and say he thought it was a good idea to place billions of taxpayer dollars in companies that do business in Iran. On June fifth, the state assembly passed AB two-two-one by a vote of seventy-five zero, and just yesterday, the Senate Committee on Public Employee Retirement System unanimously passed this bill. It's drawn support from every corner of the political universe, and I encourage you to support it as well.
Thank you. Esther, followed by Gary Dalen, followed by Suma Dog.
Hello, I'm Esther Renzer, president of Stand With Us. I applaud Councilmember Jack Weiss for his moral clarity in bringing these resolutions before you today. Jack Weiss-proposed directives offer the, offer those of us who wish to learn from history a compelling lesson. Dictatorships and tyrannies, and those nations who peddle hatred and export terrorism, should never be afforded the privilege of open and unfettered trade with our great nation. While Iran challenges the world with its support of terrorism, exporting terror to Iraq, Syria, Hezbollah, and Lebanon, to Hamas and Palestine, and threatens Israel with annihilation, and snubs all efforts at preventing its growth into a nuclear power, we, the citizens of this great nation and of this state, must take a stand. And indeed, the world should have stood firm against Nazi Germany in the nineteen-thirties, and it is our, it is our imperative to use every available means at our disposal to force Iran to back down on its aggressive ambitions and agenda. In this regard, divestment from firms doing business with Iran is one of the most important weapons in our arsenal. If such a movement gains momentum around the country, with L.A. as a leader, it will be an extremely powerful economic incentive, forcing the mullahs to heed international demands for nonproliferation and to retract from aggression. Never again is a phrase that is informed by past atrocities, but is directed at our future. It is our moral imperative as citizens of this vibrant city of Los Angeles to make this a living statement. While the world looks to Los Angeles to entertain her, we can do much more. We can step up to the plate and say, "We will not be silent in the face of evil. We will proudly take a stand and invest in our future with moral clarity." Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
My name is Gary Dalen. I represent the Israel Christian Nexus as its National Executive Director. I want to endorse and repeat what Esther Resner just said, because this resolution is one that is indeed a moral opportunity for this council to stand against intolerance, bigotry, and fascism. The Talibanic-type regime that this resolution aims against is one which is against Buddhists, as were blown up by the Taliban. And as we have seen only in the last week, that since their surrogates, the Hamas in Gaza, has blown up the churches of Gaza, our leadership, from Dr. Jack Hayford and Isaiah Zeldin and Shimon Aram, are asking you, the council, to stand firm and make this resolution happen, to show that this council is standing morally for justice and right. So I ask you, in paraphrasing the Mishnah, to do this, and think about if I am not for justice and what is right, who will be, and if not now, when? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Suma Dog? It's not here. Roberta Said, followed by Doris Wise Montrose. Roberta Said, followed by Doris Weiss-Montrose.
Hello, I'm Roberta Said. I'm a historian and the education research consultant for Stand With Us. I'm here to say that Stand With Us is immensely grateful that Councilman Weiss and others introduced these measures, and we urge all council members to adopt them. We believe that investing taxpayer money in Iran is counterproductive, self-defeating, and self-destructive. The previous speakers have already touched on many of these issues. For one thing, investing in Iran is contrary to American foreign policy: self-defeating, counterproductive. It is counterproductive to invest in a self-proclaimed enemy of the United States and its allies. Iran has defied the international community and continues developing its military and nuclear capacity. This buildup is directed at the U.S., Israel, and Western Europe. Lest there be any doubt, at its annual military parade in 2005, Iran had anti-U.S. and anti-Israel slogans on its newest missiles. But more importantly, there is a larger issue. There is a moral imperative. Iran's bellicose, anti-Semitic, and anti-Western propaganda and actions should make it a pariah in the community of nations. Californians and Angelinos can and should denounce this evil before it is too late, and use every means possible to forcefully condemn this state and compel its government to reform, or compel Iranians to change their regime. Council members, we are at a crossroads, a historical crossroads. There is an avowed hostile regime that funds international terrorism and racism. It has not yet developed its full military potential.
Thank you.
As an historian, I'm intensely aware...
If I could ask you to conclude.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, no, no, just go ahead. I know it goes fast.
As an historian, I'm intensely aware of failed opportunities in the past that have led to disaster. We have an opportunity. The democratic nation of the United States, Los Angelinos, and Californians have an opportunity to speak up and act and try to affect the course of history. We can do no less.
Thank you. Doris Weiss-Montrose, followed by, I think it's Orin Lazar, followed by Mark Rothman.
Good morning. I'm Doris Weiss-Montrose, President of Children of Jewish Holocaust Survivors, Los Angeles. I partner with Michael Mandeville on the efforts to support legislation to divest from companies doing business with the Islamic Republic of Iran, a country whose leadership openly and consistently denies the Holocaust, threatens Israel with total annihilation, and is a present and future threat to the entire world. I thank the city council for doing the right thing and showing true leadership to the country and the world. When former Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu began to urge divestment from Iran as a tool to bring down this regime, I searched for ways to act on his idea as a citizen. When I heard that Mayor Villarrealosa had signed a bill divesting from the Sudan, I knew I had found that opportunity. I drafted a letter to the mayor, all the members of the city council, and the Board of Supervisors urging them to do the same with Iran as they had done with the Sudan. I was contacted by Assemblyman Joel Anderson's office and informed about his bill, AB 221, and asked to help as a citizen. So began my campaign as an ordinary citizen on the support of this bill. Through emails, letters, phone calls, and incessant nagging of my organization, there were about 25 Jewish-Iranian Christian and Union who supported the bill to its passage through the First Committee. I promised to do the same for Councilman Weiss. The bill has had unprecedented success, passing through the Assembly, and now having passed unanimously through the First Senate Committee. It is expected to pass to the governor. Investing in Iran is bad business practice and is morally and ethically reprehensible. What kind of message do we send to our country about our security and our way of life for ourselves and our children by investing Americans' retirement dollars in a terrorist state like the Islamic Republic of Iran? Because of California's leadership, more than 10 other states, including the Congress, have made efforts toward divestment. The city of Los Angeles can be the leader on the city level on this issue and put our money where our mouth is.
If I could just ask you to conclude, we've gone over the two minutes.
Two little paragraphs. Rabbi Stephen S. Weiss said that the anti-Nazi boycott of 1933 was a moral imperative. We know what happened then. The same moral imperative exists today, that American money should not be invested in a regime whose slogan is "Death to America" should not even require debate for Americans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Orin Lazar, followed by Mark Rothman. Then Peter Marcus, Larry Klein, and then we will go out to the San Fernando Valley.
Good morning. My name is Orin Lazar. I was born and raised in Los Angeles, and I'm currently a law student in Georgetown waiting to come home. I'm here to speak in favor of AB 221, and I'd like to highlight two main reasons that I think that this is a good resolution. First, I think it's a well-constructed and narrowly tailored resolution. It's targeted at the proper sectors and Iran's economy. It's not meant to deny aid to the needy, and it won't impede positive change. But instead, it's a proper exercise of our local government's power to decide where our money's going to go and what type of investments we'd like to support. Secondly, I think this is a bad investment policy. Regardless of your position on Iran's desire to obtain nuclear weapons, it's an unstable regime and a volatile region. We need this money for our future, and workers need this money for their retirement. Companies invested in the defense, energy, and nuclear sectors of Iran are not safe investments, and I hope the council will vote to support this resolution.
Thank you. Mark Rothman? Mark Rothman? Not here. Okay. Peter Marcus?
Good morning. My name is Peter Marcus. I've spoken to you a couple of times before about divestment issues. This time, I'm speaking on my own behalf and on behalf of my children. I've been working with this body for two years on divestment issues and have helped develop, in the city, in the state, and with some of the pension boards, a program of targeted divestment. And one of the keys to what we've been developing has been not just a divestment program that calls on the city to sell off from companies doing business with Sudan, but to engage with those companies. Constructive engagement is one of the few areas where you can really leverage your voice on important issues, particularly ones where human rights issues are concerned, and, more importantly today, issues where our own national government has declared that we are a targeted threat from the regime that we are asking you to consider divesting from. Constructive engagement allows you to apply political pressure by asking the companies that are targeted under the criteria set forth in 221 to take specific actions, and only if they don't take those specific actions do you ever get to the point of selling off. So in terms of fiduciary responsibilities of your pension plans, oftentimes, companies that they're invested in will be responsive to your efforts. I understand that a number of the pensions have their own jurisdictional concerns, and I would ask this body to offer guidance to them, to act consistent with their fiduciary responsibilities, to act on this targeted divestment plan, to engage in constructive engagement, and to empower the moderates in Iran, who really would benefit from this sort of proposal. A number of the people speaking before me have spoken about why Iran should be targeted, but I think really the key is to helping the moderates that can gain power in Iran and speak to that issue. I think Councilmember Jack Weiss for his leadership on this issue, and for Councilman Garcetti's input as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Klein?
It's great to be able to speak here. I'm for 47, but I also want to talk about, enough has been said about Iran, I want to talk about the fact that 47 may not be enough. I think it's half a package, and we need more. And I'm talking about REITs that are in the United States that are doing business. As it's said, it seldom turns out the way it does in the song. And I would like everybody to engage with me in a thought experiment here for a moment. We know what Iran's doing, everybody knows that. We know they're enriching uranium, but too many people think that the rate is constant. Well, it's not, and I can explain that to you without revealing anything about uranium by saying that there's two types of energy, potential and kinetic. If you take, imagine that you take a baseball and you throw it up as high as you can in the air, okay, that's kinetic energy. That takes you to get 4%. As the ball falls, that's potential energy. It's free fall, and it falls at 32 seconds, 32 meters per second squared. That's potential energy, that's gravity, and once you get there, you rapidly approach 90%. Now imagine here in Los Angeles, at the Kodak Theatre where the Academy Awards are held each year. Imagine between La Brea and Highland, okay, on Hollywood Boulevard. Imagine if that was owned by one company. And suppose that company were able to fund, okay, their investments with Calpers and Calsters, our pension funds, okay? Hundreds of millions of dollars. Suppose that those REITs, okay, are combined with foreign investments. We don't know where those monies go, but we've got to keep them out of Iran, because we know what's happening, and time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go back to the San Fernando Valley. Donna Perman?
Okay.
Ms. Perman?
I'm speaking, I'm Donna Perman. I'm speaking for myself and Miriam Fogler, and thank you for voting for 14 forthwith. This is something you can be proud of, something with substance. I'm speaking about Agenda 48, 58, and 59, and we need to denounce Iran and Oslo Middle East process as a death to the Jews and death to us all. We are dealing with monsters. We need to denounce Iran, the wish for the destruction of Israel. They would wipe off Israel off the map, and they would wipe us off too if they could. Iran says the Holocaust never existed, with all the evidence showing the slaughter of millions of Jews. How dare they say that? My best friend had ancestors die in the Holocaust, and one almost died right on the verge. Iran has gone against the Koran. Jews had the right to live there. It's in the Koran. We don't need to deal with the monsters of Iran. Iran spits hateful lies and misleads the people. Islam is beautiful. Iran is not. We need to say no to Iran, or we're not any better than they are. We need to go this forthwith. And, let's see, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weiss, followed by Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the many speakers who came today. We had a really strong turnout, and I really appreciate all of you coming, not just here today, but to Sacramento, because so many of you have been involved in that process as well. I want to thank my co-sponsor, Mr. Garcetti, for signing on to this with about, you know, less than half a second's worth of thought, because it was an obvious no-brainer to him. I want to thank Mr. Smith for waiving it out of committee, because the matter was time urgent up in Sacramento, and for the city to get on the record in a way that's meaningful in the Sacramento process, we needed Mr. Smith to do that. And although he's speaking over there, Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange? If I just have one second, I just want to congratulate you and make sure that everyone who's here, as an activist today, knows that on our consent calendar earlier today, thanks to Mr. Labange, Los Angeles voted to create a new museum of the Holocaust, thanks to his efforts. We can, let's congratulate Mr. Labange on that. Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you for the leadership of the community, including Mr. Goldrich and others, who were victims of that horrible part of history of the world. And the important part is all of us to visit Pan Pacific Park, even now, to see the monuments that's there and reflect on that tragedy, as we continue with this very important measure.
Thank you. Thank you for what you did on that, Mr. Labange. We have two measures before us today, colleagues. One measure supports the Anderson bill. I want to thank Assemblyman Anderson as well, and his representative who drove up from San Diego. Thank you for coming, and please thank the assemblyman for us. One measure supports the state bill that is working its way through the state legislature. The other measure would have our pension funds do the same, and it tracks the state measure. We're not trying to create, you know, a new mess of widgets here. We want to be narrowly tailored and simple, so that all public pension managers, hopefully in the state, hopefully in the nation, will follow the same narrow path. The bottom line in all these measures is simple. None of us want, or should want, our public pension dollars, our public dollars, really, invested in companies that do business in Iran, and by virtue of the fact that they do business of Iran in those sectors, inevitably help Iran develop nuclear weapons, which Iran in turn intends to use against the United States and our allies. That's the bottom line here. Make no mistake about it, Iran is the number-one threat to United States security and to the security of the world, but this is an instance, a rather unique instance, where cities and states throughout this country can do something about it. The importance of our action today will not only be to get L.A. on the path towards moving out of these companies in these sectors, but also, I hope, to catalyze other cities and states throughout the country to do the same. We don't have much of a value by ourselves, although Lasers, Calpers, Calsters have a heck of a value, but together, as part of a nationwide effort, we will have an extraordinary impact, and we'll have an extraordinary impact abroad as well. I just want to underscore one fact that many of our speakers mentioned, but when it happens, it's so unusual, it should be noted, and that is, this is a bipartisan effort, locally and at the state level. We've had the Republican Jewish Coalition, Democrats for Israel, we've had a Republican Assemblyman, I'm a Democrat, and the Republican governor is going to sign this bill. I believe we also have support, and we'll have it soon in writing from our Democratic mayor. Let's add our voice today by subtracting our wallets from Iran. Thank you, colleagues, for your support.
Thank you. And before, we're going to call Mr. Zein next, who is a maker of one of the motions, and then we will go to Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. This is regarding the item number 58, and I've heard from all the speakers and agree with you all in your comments. I want to preface this by stating I'm the President of the Jewish Home Executives, a member of AJC, a member of AIPAC. And what this reminds me of is what happened in South Africa when apartheid was there and economic sanctions were in place, and obviously apartheid went away, and South Africa started to free people. What we have in this particular situation is a dictatorship, and the issue that I have a concern with is how the individual, the president of the country, is so bizarre in his comments and his statements. The motion that we introduced calls for the condemnation of those statements, and the reality that the individual is not in his right mind when he makes the allegations, such as the Holocaust didn't exist, and anyone who believes in that is spreading rumors and innuendos. So the motion that we introduced, the resolution, which goes along with Mr. Weiss, is to take a position to condemn the president of Iran and to say vocally and very forcefully that all these issues, together, combined, will have an impact on changing the attitude, changing the economic environment of Iran, and also changing to bring about common sense and bringing about human dignity. As stated, it's not a Republican or Democratic issue. I am a Catholic Lebanese, and I'm the President of the Jewish Home Executives. Catholic Lebanese, a member of AIPAC, Catholic Lebanese, a member of AJC, and I believe that we're dealing with human rights and the dignity of individuals. So what we want to do, yes, Jack, I'm a Republican too. Jack wants me to mention that. I'm a Republican on top of that, and I'm still supporting all this, because it's the right thing to do. And hopefully, other entities around this country will join forces with this, and will have an impact, and will condemn those that need to be condemned and bring about the reality. And when I see the 90-year-old individuals at the Jewish Home who still have the marks of the Holocaust, and the Holocaust survivors, and very few of them still living, and the stories that they tell, the horrifying stories that they tell, how an individual in this day and age can do what he does to condemn people and to try and wipe out a society, it's absolutely ridiculous. So I join with that. I'm sure my colleagues will join with that. I thank all of you for being here this morning for this discussion, and this will go along with the other measures that we've implemented. At least, Los Angeles City Council has taken a measure forward, and hopefully, our federal legislators and our state legislators will all join forces. Again, it's about human dignity and human rights, condemning those who are not acknowledging the realities. So, Mr. Weiss, thank you for bringing this about. Mr. Garcetti, thank you for seconding the motions, and hopefully, we'll make this happen for the people that need to have their voices heard, and we are doing that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank the community for coming here today and speaking so eloquently.
I want to thank the community for coming here today and speaking so eloquently. I'll be leaving shortly to hook up with Ambassador Dennis Ross over at the Pacific Council to have a further discussion about Israel and the Middle East and the peace efforts there. Obviously, when I did the Mideast Perspective Show, we talked about this all the time. Iran is a country that is living outside of the law. It is an outlawed country. And as an openly gay guy, when I saw the hanging of two seventeen-year-old boys for nothing, adding that to all the persecution and all the prejudice that comes out of that crazy leader they have, we have no choice but to attempt the same thing we did in South Africa about apartheid. We must stop this regime. They're now cracking down on civil liberties with all of its people. They're rounding up people right and left and, and putting them in prison, and they're killing their people. So we, as a great nation that believes in peace and democracy, must boycott Iran. We must boycott all aspects of that country. Frankly, when we finish with Iran, there are other places on the earth that is also, like Darfur and, and the Sudan, and the genocide going on there. Or even in China, with some of the aspects of what they do to their own people that I witnessed when I was over there last year. But yes, of course, let's all support this unanimously. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Zine and Mr. Weiss, for these motions, and thank you for allowing me to co-introduce them or to second them for both of you. And I think it is very important, sometimes we spend a lot of times on what seems to be international issues, but we're the most international city in, in the world. We are a great Jewish city here in Los Angeles, and we are a great Iranian city as well. The largest population of Persians outside of Iran live here. We're also a great Persian Jewish city as well, but we happen to be a place that has consistently spoken out, South Africa was mentioned, Burma, Sudan, and now Iran. There are three of us on this council who are Jewish. There are many of us who have been active. Our Phoenician brother, Mr. Zine, I think is definitely an honorary Jew, and somebody who's spoken out on Middle Eastern issues a lot, and is a very important voice on this as well. Why this is important is, A, we can never be silent whenever there is a lie told. When someone would deny the Holocaust, for those of us who, who know and have seen and who have felt the impact of the survivors and our own families or in our own communities of the Holocaust, we always have to answer those lies with even louder truths. But second, we also have to be vigilant. We have to speak out against human rights abuses throughout the world in Iran, where not only Jews, Christians, Zoroastrians, Balukis, Kurds, everybody that's in Iran who doesn't fit into a mainstream vision of the extremists who have taken control of that country, not only are marginalized, but as Mr. Rosendahl pointed out, lost their lives, seen their liberties taken away, and so on. And then lastly, our city money. Our city employees work very hard, and our state employees work very hard, and I want to thank Assemblymember Anderson as well for his leadership on this issue. They deserve not to have their money invested in places where we essentially are putting money where our values are not. Our money should reflect what our values are, and we should be able to have that impact together. And we've seen many of these things start in Los Angeles. We are one of the first cities to speak out against many of these international atrocities in other places, and to join that momentum that had an impact that did change history. I'm glad you brought up the hypothetical of Hollywood and Highland. It happens to be owned with money from Calpers by two Israeli-Americans, so I think we're in safe hands there, and the Kodak Theater is owned by ourselves. But you're, it's a cogent point as well in looking at where our real estate investments are internationally, and to ensure that this is just a start, but it's a very important one, and it's a very loud one from the second-largest city in America that hopefully will join with many, many other cities. So, thank you again, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Zine, and let us work as well, not just to say our work is done today, but to be available for the community. As you speak to other cities and for the Assemblymember, have them call us, have them talk to us, have, so we can replicate what we're doing here and make that very loud voice here become a chorus that will overwhelm a regime that needs to change and that needs to tell the truth. If they won't, we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and since I'm in the chair, I won't speak long, I wanted to add my support for the three motions before us and the importance of having the diversity of individuals here today, supporting these resolutions in a proud day in our city council. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you would open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
All three have been approved, and those will go forthwith. Thank you. I know, colleagues, our speaker on item number sixty-three has, has left for the day, so I'd like to ask that item, if we could, Madam Clerk, to open the roll on item sixty-three, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
[inaudible]
Oh, you've returned. I'm so sorry. I had called your name earlier, and you were not here. We will not item that. We'll hold, we'll, we'll keep that item then. Thank you. I know, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Rosendahl, they wanted to take a commissioner next on item thirty-two, and then we will go back to the agenda. Mr. Pacheco will take item number thirty-two. Mr. Weiss, we have Mr. Pacheco. Would you like to say a few words before we begin the discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. My apologies, colleagues. I, I feel the same way as I did the day the mayor initially appointed Mr. Pacheco to be a member of the Police Commission. On that day, I, you know, I only knew him because we worked side-by-side for six years as federal prosecutors. Now I've had the chance to work side-by-side with him in, in the cause of public safety and the LAPD, and I, you are, you are one of the most dedicated commissioners I've ever seen. You've done more ride-alongs and spent more time with the line, rank and file than any police commissioner I, I've really ever known. I'm very proud of what you've accomplished, and I'm very, very proud to stand in support of your renomination. I assume everybody else feels the same way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I also join in those positive comments. I know that you've been there, and you've been a very direct and, shall we say, team member of that commission to make the right choices and to support the hard work of the minimum of the LAPD, and when there's criticism, not afraid to voice that criticism, so most appropriate in this second term. Was it a full term you did the first time?
No, it was a half-term, eighteen months.
Okay. It seems like a full term.
It does.
The, the challenges that, that we're faced with the consent decree, the challenges of the May First incident, can you comment on the consent decree, and hopefully the point will terminate that? And also the May First, any observations you can make public on those two situations?
Sure. First, as to the consent decree, look, that, we, we really need to get our arms around it and put an end to it. We really need to comply. There are some loose ends, but they're important ones. Compliance with Teams Two needs to get up and running on a very substantial daily basis. We've made great progress there, but it really needs to, to go further faster. There's other aspects of the consent decree that we really need to address, and this commission is firmly committed to moving that forward, so that the, the city can get outside of the consent decree and move forward with supervision by the Police Commission, with the great assistance of the Inspector General. As to the MacArthur Park incident, it's a tragic day in our, our city for that incident. There were some terrible issues that arose as a result of it. It was a disaster from a community police relations standpoint. I'm not prejudging it, but I've seen an awful lot of the tape, I've seen all of the tape that I could get my hands on of the, the incident on that day. I, I want to understand it fully. There are four or more active investigations into it. There were some, as the chief has said, some command failures, and I'll be pushing to know more about that. And then there's some individual responsibility of certain officers that I'll be looking to explore, and if there was wrongful conduct, hold those officers accountable for that conduct. So, to me, it's about accountability, it's about transparency, it's about doing the work to understand what happened, to do it in a dispassionate way, to make sure that this commission and the department makes the necessary adjustments so it doesn't happen again. It was a huge embarrassment for this city, and we just can't tolerate those types of events. We really have to make sure to, that that conduct is not continuing in the, in the future.
Okay. And I know the commitment is one meeting, one meeting a week on Tuesdays, how you manage a practice in addition to that. I don't know how you, or the other commissioners, I think Mr. Mack was retired, but how you manage that with all of the reading materials and all of the issues that you have to go over. And I know you get zero compensation, so much appreciated for the dedication you have as a member of the Los Angeles Police Commission, a very proud commission with a long history of setting policy. And a lot of people don't realize that you are the policymakers for the Los Angeles Police Department. So I congratulate you and keep juggling that schedule to make it work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, then Mr. Labange, Mr. Alakon.
Just a quick second on this. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm delighted that you and I are, are living in the same neighborhood, in the Mar Vista area. We did have an informal discussion before you sat there to talk about the Safe Cities Initiative and its impact on the homelessness and some civil rights issues that might be involved in that. We'll, we'll, we'll continue that dialogue. Secondly, the L.A. Bridges, the, the Bridges Program, which is a terrific program of safe passages. We have issues with our middle school, Mark Twain Middle School, and Venice High School. We both live in that neighborhood. There are gangs, four or five gangs within our area there, and we need to obviously find a way to make the schools safe for our kids. And the third issue you and I talked about was the May First incidents and what that means, and I know there are many ongoing investigations. So thank you for stepping back up to the plate. We look forward to your continued leadership on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you for your service and all the number of times, from the groundbreaking of the new station out at Leventon, Vermont, to many other times we've seen you in the community. I appreciate your involvement. Just any concept, is anybody of the commissioners, I know Mr. Scoban we've talked to a little bit about, but advocating for the challenges of traffic, traffic enforcement, because that's a big issue in the city.
It's a, a huge issue that threatens to, to deadlock us, if it hasn't in some parts of the city already. It's an issue that is a public safety issue, no doubt. It's an issue that the Police Department has to be acutely aware of. Yes, I would say that all of the commissioners, in our drives to the commission hearings, understand the issue greatly. It is something that we have to address. It's a serious issue, and I'm on board to consider that and any other things we can do to relieve some congestion or handle it appropriately.
One thing I spoke of is trying to get air support involved, and I know in Mr. Zine's adjourned motion of, or Captain Beal, I believe, spoke about the old days of air support. Could you check on that to see what air support could do for traffic and working with the Department of Transportation and all those efforts? And just thank you for your service. It's a thankless job, but it's such an important job, and I stand to thank you and your family for your service to Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Alakon. Mr. Alakon, and then Mr. Weezer.
Yes, the, obviously, the incident, the demonstration raises a ton of questions, and frankly, I was very pleased that the chief took a very direct and honest approach to express himself immediately following, and expressed his concern and anger at the incident. But in the meetings that we've had with the chief here in the council chamber, I have repeated to ask the question about, are we reviewing the Christopher Commission report and the federal mandates that have come down, as we, the consent decrees that have come down as related to previous activities of the Police Department, relative to whether any of the officers involved in this activity are, are subjects of previous investigations relative to those actions? So what I'm trying to get at is that the, the issue that brought about the federal consent decree was really about a culture within Los Angeles Police Department, and this incident, we can get lost in the tactics and strategy of it and not deal with the, whether or not there was an institutional culture. So I wanted to hear your comments with regard to determining whether or not any of that institutional culture was present in the specific acts of the officers.
I think that question is a, is central to our evaluation of what happened on that day. I mean, how is it, after the great reform in the city with regard, oh, that's occurred over the years, with regard to the Police Department, how could this event happen? And I do think that a lot of it has to do with the culture. And I have directed the department in prior commission meetings to take a look at, is Metro, which was involved in this incident, too isolated? Should there be feasibility studies to determine whether officers should circulate in and out of Metro to, because right now those officers go to hotspots in the city, and they deal with the worst of the worst. Should they somehow be integrated at some point? Right now, they can have lifetime tenure in Metro. Should that be the case? There are, there are serious issues to look at as to the group of officers that were involved in that particular event, and what was the culture? What was going on? Are there institutional things we should be doing to address the issue so that we don't suffer this issue again, and again, and again? I mean, the city's had enough of these, these traumas. So I think these are legitimate questions. I'm not making any proposals right now. I'm keeping an open mind as to the analysis, but I don't think anything should be off the table for consideration. There should be nothing that we refuse to look at. We should really examine everything, and the cultural aspect of what caused this problem, I think, needs to be explored greatly. So I couldn't agree with you more.
Well, I want to, I want to repeat that there's a list of individuals who have been identified as repeat offenders relative to violence on the job. And I'm, I'm wondering if, if any of the officers involved in that incident are on that list, or are, have been alleged or have been found to have had a violent past with regard to incidents while on duty. And so I would specifically ask that you look at each officer. See, I, I happen to believe that one bad apple can spoil the bunch. So while we're looking at Metro, we may lose sight that one officer might have instigated others to react in a way that they might otherwise not have reacted. And, and so I, I'd like you to look at it, not just from the unit and division perspective, but also from the individual perspective.
I, I appreciate your comments, and yes, my, I have been looking at it from sort of an institutional standpoint, from a cultural standpoint, from a command and control standpoint, but also as to individual responsibility of officers on the ground doing their job. Was it appropriate?
And their history.
And their history. I couldn't agree with you more. And in fact, on every of these matters that, that rise to, to the level of a categorical use of force, I look at the officer's history. I, I, I believe in, in certain ways, it's, it's appropriate, and I do, as appropriate, look at that and evaluate it. So yes, I, I hear you, and I understand that.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer is our last speaker.
Mr. Pacheco, I think you've been a wonderful addition to this commission. I think your perspective is a refreshing one, and I want to thank you for your service and your thoughtfulness in approaching all these issues. I think you bring a very good balance to some very difficult issues at times, at least from what I've seen, and so I want to encourage doing that. Oftentimes, it's a tough place to be given, such as the MacArthur Park incident and other things like that. You want to ensure that we continue to support our Police Department, our hard-working officers, at the same time be transparent and open on what needs to be corrected, and I think I've seen that and heard that from you on the commission. So thank you for your service, and I just wonder how people like you, who have a very demanding job outside of this commission, find the time to balance both, but we know what that's like, so really appreciate you giving of your time to serve the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and fortunately, my law firm permits me all of the time that I need to do this, so they've stood behind me completely to do it.
Well, we thank them, and we thank you very much for your service, and let's open the roll on the renomination of Mr. Pacheco. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
For your reappointment. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Round of applause for Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Rosendahl has asked for item nineteen to be next, and if there's no objection, we'll take number nineteen. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number nineteen has to do with the Green Line, and we're very excited very excited about getting the Green Line going. It's only a couple of miles from LAX, and as we do the remod of the airport, we reinvest in that infrastructure and make it the world-class airport that it should be. We'll be doing the Tom Bradley Terminal. We'll do the consolidated round car. We'll do the people mover, and we want to tie the people mover into the Green Line. We hope to grab the funds together from various sources, in no way jeopardize any of the MTA projects that are already on the boards, but it will be everybody's plug-in to the airport. In fact, I envision at Aviation and Century, which will be one of the stops, where all the other lines can plug in. Mr. Wesson and I are talking about how we can make the language effective so that it is now in suspense up in Sacramento, that it gets out of suspense and gets going forward. So I'm looking forward to the former speaker's leadership with me on that, and I'd like to continue this item for one week as we work out those fine details, Mr. President.
Okay. So any objection to continuing for one week? That'll take us to July 3rd. Seeing none? Go ahead, and we'll continue that till the 3rd of July. Thank you. And Mr. Rosendahl also asked for number thirty-one out of order. That would be next. Any objection to that? If not, Mr. Rosendahl, item thirty-one.
I thank you, Mr. President, for the privilege of going out of order with this, and I want to thank you colleagues for allowing me this opportunity to do this. This is an incredible new moment for us, and it's called Implement a Point-of-Sale Plan for Repairing City Sidewalks. Mr. Parks and Mr. Smith, especially Mr. Smith, who historically has been a leader on the Public Works Committee on this issue, we're moving forward with creating some committees, and the public needs to know that the department is setting up four subcommittees to investigate a point-of-sale program. One, workforce development and training. Two, legal issues and ordinance changes. Three, program structure, and four, community and business outreach. I must say, the community and business outreach has to be a key element, as Mr. Smith and I strongly believe. But let me explain what this point-of-sale sidewalk repair program will do. Owners are not required to pay or do anything until they sell their property. The cash that the owners receive from the sale of the property provides them the opportunity to pay for the repairs. The repairs will actually improve the value of the property being sold and the neighborhood as a whole. This will be of no cost to the city. The repair training program will create new skilled local jobs. Many properties are sold when the owner leaves the area, and other properties are sold by absentee owners, thereby reducing the burden on residents. Folks, you've heard Bill Robertson more than once get up here and say it will take eighty-six years to do all of our sidewalks. Well, we can do the point-of-sale. We can get it done over the next ten years. It's a win-win for everybody. So I just want to highlight that, and I want to thank Mr. Parks for his leadership on that, and especially Mr. Smith for his leadership, and Mr. Labons, who's been a tremendous part of the committee working on point-of-sale. And colleagues, as we go forward with these committees, we will come back to you with an ordinance, and we'll finally get our sidewalks in this great city fixed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just also want to thank Mr. Smith for not giving up. This has been around for quite a while, and now that we have it to the point of getting these committees in place, I think we'll all benefit from it. If you look in retrospect, with all of the properties sold in the city of L.A. over the last three to four years, we could have made a major impact on sidewalk repair. And this is something that, as we all know, you can't go to a meeting without people talking about sidewalks, alleys, trees, and streets. Those are the big four. And so this is something I think will, just as we mandate houses to be repaired or to have impact on emergency preparedness and strapping down refrigerators and things like this, this should be just another matter of ensuring the neighborhood is taken care of. And the other issue, I think, we can't lose sight of how much it enhances the value of the property for the person who lives there, that their sidewalks are in good repair. And yes, Mr. Smith, I said alleys, the big four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks, and thank you as well to Mr. Smith. I know this has been a long time coming, and we'll get the ball rolling, at least on this. There are no cards on this today, so with that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item six is the reappointment of Mr. Daniel Gattaca to the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners.
Who's been very patient. Welcome, Mr. Gattaca. Come on up and... I'd like to recognize the chair of our Neighborhood and Education Committee, Mr. Alacon.
This is actually my first commission member appointment. So excuse me for being a little disheveled. Daniel Gattaca reported to the committee this morning, but he served on the commission for a number of years, and so he is very well-qualified for this position. I feel a special affinity for this particular appointment because he comes out of my district, and he's done a lot of work in the Pacoima area as well as throughout the northeast San Fernando Valley. Has a very good perspective on children, youth, and families, and, and some of the responsibilities, I'm sorry, and the neighborhood council system, and some of the responsibilities therein. And I think will greatly embellish some of the work that we've begun, because, as you all know, the work with respect to neighborhood council is far from finished. It's, it's an experiment and a work in progress, and Daniel Gattaca is well aware of that. So with that, I'd like to present Mr. Gattaca to make his comments with regard to why he has agreed to accept this appointment once again.
Good afternoon. Like I mentioned before, I just want to be given the opportunity to bring some of that knowledge that I've actually obtained in the last, what, eleven years working in the northeast valley with different community groups, and I want to be able to bring it, you know, to citywide with the neighborhood councils. So I would hope for your appointment.
Thank you. Our next speaker does not exist, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll and the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Round of applause for our commissioner. Next item, please.
Item seven is the reappointment of Ms. Evangeline Ordaz-Molina to the Affordable Housing Commission.
Who's also been very patient. With that, I'd like to recognize the chair of our HCD committee, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. We had an opportunity to have a, a very wonderful discussion with Ms. Molina this morning. Her resume is a very good one. Sometimes when you have the opportunity to reappoint someone, you, you get added experience and knowledge, and I think without a shadow of a doubt, that's what we get in Ms. Molina. She seems to be excited about the challenges that lay ahead and has a plan as to how she'd like to move forward and, and make this place a better place. So with that said, I'd like to request that all of my colleagues would join me in voting yes on this reappointment, and ask Ms. Molina if she would just say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Wesson. I really appreciate your time today, this morning, and today at council. I've been on the commission since January of 2006, so about a year and a half now, and in that time, I've learned a lot about how the housing department works and what the role the commission can play in supporting that work. I currently am co-chairing the Housing Element Technical Assistance Task Force Committee, along with Robin Hughes from the Planning Department, and, and am also working to promote some cross-commission cooperation on the issue of housing. And, and I would really appreciate the opportunity to continue that work. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. I just want to fully support this appointment. I've known Ms. Ordaz-Molina for some time when we met, when we were both board members for the East L.A. Community Corporation, which provides affordable housing to the greater east Los Angeles area. And I couldn't think of anybody else who would be more knowledgeable about affordable housing issues than Ms. Ordaz-Molina, and so thank you for your service, and I think we appreciate what you've done before and will continue to do. And you're doing great work outside of this commission to support and provide more people with opportunities to afford housing. So thank you so much for the work you do.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Let's open the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service to the city of Los Angeles, Ms. Molina. Next item.
Item thirteen was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry.
Mr. Garcetti is also going to speak on this. If you, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I'm going to just put some questions on the record. I don't know if the city attorney is here on this item, or if there is a city attorney here on the item, but these are the comments that I wanted to list. I need the city attorney to be included in the review of this matter to clarify restrictions in the charter with respect to funding that can be applied to camera purchases. Okay, and then my next question is, Los Angeles Police Department should also be included in the planning, the planning process with the Department of Recreation and Parks, because they can give great assistance in identifying the highest priority parks and, and helping to prioritize, as well as camera placement, to enhance the effectiveness of the cameras. And I also request that council offices be given a role in establishing this program and give me the next step. So the first question is, city attorney clarifying restrictions in the charter with respect to funding that can be applied to camera purchases. Hold my time. Is there anybody up there?
There's no one here from the city attorney.
No city attorney? Okay. Maybe you could identify yourselves so we know where you're from.
And if you could put right into the microphone, please.
Frank Pizzi is Department of General Services, Office of Public Safety.
Captain Robert Hauck, LAPD, Office of Operations.
Sergeant Dan Gomez, Office of Operations.
Captain Jerry Perez, Department of General Services, Office of Public Safety.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any need to hold this up. If my concerns, the things that I've just expressed, be incorporated in what we're about to vote on, that's certainly fine with me.
May I ask the clerk, can you articulate that in the written questions?
Well, if the council member wishes to make a motion, do him.
Yeah, I can make a motion. Okay, then maybe, so my motion will be to request that the city attorney be included to help clarify restrictions in the charter with respect to funding and whether it can be applied to camera purchases. Next point, Los Angeles Police Department should be included in the planning parts, process with the Department of Recreation and Parks, because LAPD can assist in prioritizing high-priority parks, and they can also give guidance as to camera placement to enhance the effectiveness of the cameras. And then also, my, my final point would be, council offices should be given a role in establishing this program. Can I have a second on that?
Second, is there Mr. Garcetti?
Okay.
Mr. Clerk?
Friendly amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Now I call on Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and absolutely, that's a good addition, and thank you very much, Ms. Perry, for that. I know you've been one of the pioneers with Mr. Reyes on cameras for public safety. Colleagues, today, we have the opportunity to take an important step towards a safer and more welcoming Los Angeles. We've had a very haphazard approach to putting public safety cameras throughout this city, something pioneered by the Los Angeles Police Department. Clearly, our city facilities have enjoyed that as well. And in my own district, we looked at the example of MacArthur Park, where Mr. Reyes was able to work with Rampart Division, and we had been working for years in Hollywood with public cameras, but specifically in parks, of taking back a public space where previous years, people would come and be besieged by people selling fake IDs, drugs, where families didn't feel safe, and where the criminals really felt that it was their park and not ours. We set a goal inside Council District 13 to try to get a camera in every single park in my own district, and we've had great success at Lake Street Park, which is also in part of Rampart Division, where we've been able to keep an eye on and allow our police officers to essentially be there 24/7. We also worked to do that in Lemon Grove Park, another place in East Hollywood that had been besieged by a lot of gang members and others. And through this, we've really seen families return. We've seen concerts. We've seen youth groups. We've seen people playing sports. The, the wreck and parks programs have seen an upswing over Lemon Grove Park, and obviously, the usage in MacArthur Park, where we recently celebrated the anniversary of Langer's, although we will tragically today adjourn in memory of Al Langer, who passed away a couple of days ago. We have seen the ability of cameras in public spaces to do just that, and I know many people had some worries with this bringing about the ire of civil libertarians. We saw it very nicely in MacArthur Park. The ACLU actually endorsed the idea, saying in public spaces, this is appropriate. These are not cameras that look into private spaces or spy on anybody, nor through cameras are we allowed to arrest anybody. It merely allows us to see behavior, which then police officers have to go out and do the normal police work of, of seeing if there's a criminal act that's actually taken place and going through all the evidentiary standards necessary. But as we look at this, I think it's time has come for us to standardize how we do cameras. I know the department, the police department, we've worked with and tried to see whether or not we could get divisions to have the same technology. In my own district, we have a different system in Hollywood, different system in Rampart, different system in northeast. We've helped bring in some of the RFPs for that. We've scrambled all of us around here for dollars. When we have a park or an area that we want to have cameras in, we haven't been able to go to one place and have one standard. But that time has come. It makes sense for our emergencies in this city, should we have another earthquake or other sort of disaster for us to be able to have that. We saw the implications in places like London, where there are terrorist incidents, of how this can be helpful as well. And we also saw ironically, with all the controversy in MacArthur Park, those cameras became the record here when the police department was talking to us about the May 1st incidents. People didn't imagine that they would be something that would be keeping an eye on everybody, but it's for our police officers, for our media, for the citizenry of Los Angeles as well. So while we've worked very hard to, to put these in as many places as possible, it's time for the CLA, working with our department, to be able to see if we can get us to work together on this. And I know that in our parks, we have, you know, three different entities that are there at different points. We have General Services, we have Wreck and Parks, and we have PD. And I appreciate that you're all at the table today, and I expect that you'll be at the table together in developing this, because the standard is not now just for the police department, which needs to be standardized, but also to help other personnel to be able to ensure that we have safe places that families can go to stay. So I urge an "aye" vote today. This is, again, a step closer to where public spaces remain public in the city of Los Angeles, and in doing so, we can feel that our entire system, our impressive system of recreation, parks, facilities, are a place that a family, senior, a young person can go and, and have an enjoyable time without fearing for their safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and before we vote, we should recognize the great Chief Ranger of Los Angeles, Albert Torres. Albert, stand up there and give a little love there. Does a great job. We need more Rangers. Mr. Zine has punched his button.
I just wanted to add that, Sergeant, you know, West Valley, they're talking about cameras, and one of the concerns I have is, we get new divisions online, the infrastructure will be built in those divisions, the new facility in Mr. Smith's district, the new Mid-Wilshire on Vermont, that we have that component within the new facilities. And I know that if West Valley puts a system in, it's not compatible with Rampart, not compatible with Hollywood, it's going to be a hodgepodge. And I think that the good intentions of the command staff and the divisions and the boosters, et cetera, putting forward the dollars, if we don't control it internally, nothing's going to connect. And I know the department has an ultimate plan of having a center downtown where they'll be able to focus on everything and keep it in line, but it's really been each division going on their own, finding the dollars and implementing, with the Boosters Club or the Chamber of Commerce or some support groups. I don't know if the department's taken a position to corral it in to say, we are going to maintain control and we're going to be the clearinghouse, so we don't have a system that's not going to be compatible with the, the system that ultimately is going to be put in place for the city of Los Angeles. I know this is about the funding aspect, but broader than that, we're talking about cameras, we need to have a system that's going to work. Does MacArthur Park work in, in the projects that we have in South Los Angeles? Because I know they got a camera system down there. So I just want to emphasize, the more divisions are going online, more divisions are moving forward, getting the dollars, that somehow management needs to say, we need to control this. We need to make sure we've got the system. If you can comment on that, Captain?
Yes, Councilman. That's one of the, exactly one of the reasons that Chief Pasinger, in the Office of Operations, created, created the Tactical Technology Unit, just so that people like Sergeant Dan Gomez here can look at it from that global perspective, looking at the entire Office of Operations, all nineteen geographic divisions and the others that we're going to bring online, so that we can do just that. It's also precisely the reason that we in the Police Department, General Services, Wrexham Park, and other city agencies have recognized that we do need to share this technology and be together at the table right up front before even being directed to by the council. So I actually appreciate the council doing that, but I also am pleased that the, that really the folks on the ground level have already recognized that and are doing that as well. So I can assure you that we will be back at this table together as this goes along.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. No one else wish you to speak. Mr. Clerk, please. Open the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. Ten ayes. Next item.
Item 23 was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Yes. Mr. Garcetti, if you could take the chair again. And if the Planning Department could come forward here and report. Stand by. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange to say a few comments, and then we'll turn over to Planning Department.
I'm going to get over to the other side here. Give us a little bit of an update on this matter here. There's a concern that potentially an environmental significant impact will take place if this single-family home is built here. We have worked with the owner of the property and their representative. We've worked with the community in trying to resolve this. We are at loggerheads. There is a report by the Planning and Land Use Committee that is before you as well. I'm trying to ask the Planning Department to figure out a way we could resolve the issues of what would be a wildlife corridor, if that is a correct way to put it in this area. So if you could answer those questions, I'm going to proceed to my other side.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Dan O'Donnell with the Planning Department of Valley Community Planning Bureau. If you would like me to specifically address that issue, as opposed to any prepared remarks, I can do that. The project has already been conditioned to incorporate a conservation easement over a substantial portion of the property that will cover both the springs, as well as a wildlife corridor habitat, the riparian habitat all around it. That was a condition required by the Mountains Conservation and Recreation Authority, the state agency responsible for wildlife in the state, as well as conditions have been incorporated based on a stream bed alteration agreement granted by the California Department of Fish and Game, which is responsible for riparian habitat. The Planning Department does not believe that a full environmental impact report is going to disclose any additional impacts, nor propose any additional mitigations that are not already discussed in the adopted or the proposed mitigated negative declaration.
And we have some cards, Mr. President?
We do have some cards on this item, I believe. No, actually, on 23. Yes, we do. Although that would require reopening of the public.
Can I just have a five-minute, quick public hearing?
Okay, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven cards. You want to do seven minutes, a minute apiece?
Right.
Okay. Without an objection, we'll reopen the public hearing on this. And we have... We'll go back and forth from different sides. We have four, five that are against.
For those who are the applicant, and then the community who's concerned about the lack of an EIR.
Is the applicant here? Did they fill out a card? I'm not sure which one is applicant. If you'd like to come forward and take the first one. Yes, as a fair hearing matter, colleagues, just remind everybody to pay attention to the testimony as closely as possible, and since there are more on the other side, we'll give two minutes. Also, when it's a fair hearing, we try to keep that as balanced even with the number of people. So why don't you take a couple minutes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, Rob Glushon, representing the applicant. With me is Kaiten Kumar, who is one of the family members of the applicant. This is not a land developer or a speculator. This family has gone through eight years to try to build a house of their dreams. They have done everything humanly possible and reasonable to respond to the legitimate requests of the community. On my right is a map of the property, and you can see in green the area that is set aside for a wildlife corridor as requested by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. That's more than half the property. Once we gave that to the conservancy and agreed to further deed restrictions on the private property, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy distanced themselves from the neighbors you're going to hear today, and they withdrew their opposition. You're going to hear complaints about water sources, wetlands. This is an area in the hills where this pervasive. It's pervasive. And the agency that has jurisdiction is the Department of Fish and Game. And in the administrative record, as disclosed at the Plum hearing, the Department of Fish and Game has signed off on this, and they've said, "With the conditions of approval, that any potential impacts will be reduced to a level of insignificance." Members of the council, this case transcends this council district. Many of you know that I represent lots of neighbors that have concerns about projects. But why should this family be the only applicant in the Mulholland Corridor in the last 20 years to be required to have an EIR? They've already been required to go eight years and have biological studies. They have a mitigated negative declaration that is second to none. And I ask you, this is about fundamental fairness. There's never been an EIR required for a Mulholland project. To my knowledge, there's never been an EIR required for a single-family home in the city of Los Angeles. And I ask you, in fundamental fairness, there's nothing that an EIR is going to do. No new information's going to come out that already exists. And if this appeal were to be granted, and if you were to reject the decision of the Planning Department, the decision of the South Valley Area Planning Commission, and your recommendation 2-0 from your Plum Committee, it really opens up the door in your own districts to any opposing neighbor, to a single-family home, to say, "There needs to be an EIR. The MND is inadequate. A categorical exemption is inadequate." Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker, Melora Hart, is next.
Hi, I'm Melora Hart, and I'm also representative of the Mulholland Outer Corridor Deer and Stream Sanctuary of Lancashire. And I've been trying to save... Thank you. I've been trying to save the area. It's a historical area in the hills where the wildlife are coming in in droves and looking for water. And the problem I have here is the lie. The lie is that there is a wetlands, and it's the last existing perennial stream in this entire area. And it's been there, it's been protected by the MTA, and the wetlands was filled up with four feet of gravel. It was... Things were put in the ground to pull the water out, and the wildlife have been suffering and suffering, and I have to put out water every day. But I won't live forever. And what I'm trying to do is have this area saved for our wildlife, because we're going to lose them all in Los Angeles. And what the Planning Department didn't do was enforce the Mulholland specific corridor rules of 100 feet from a stream and 200 feet from a parkland. They didn't enforce it. If they had, we wouldn't be asking for an EIR. I'm just asking that the Planning Department enforce the rules that are on the books right now.
Our next speaker is Marie Campbell. Marie Campbell, here.
Good afternoon. My name is Marie Campbell. I'm the president of Sapphoz Environmental, and we were the firm that was retiring to prepare the environmental documentation for this project. We believe the city planning director has appropriately determined that the mitigated negative declaration is the right document to support your decision-making process. The purpose of the California Environmental Quality Act is to make sure that the impacts are identified, disclosed, and that mitigation measures are provided to resolve those impacts. It was never intended to be a mechanism to prevent single-family property owners from developing a single-family residence. The facts of the matter are that this property is consistent with the land use designation and the zoning, which allowed development of up to a 15,000-square-foot structure. Structure's been reduced to 4,200 square foot, 4,200 square foot, and although they're not required, the property owner has volunteered to dedicate over half of their property. There are 160 acres of open space designated in this community plan area. An additional 10% of the plan area is proposed for open space or considered desirable for open space. This project does not impact any designated open space area or any area proposed for open space designation. We're available to answer any questions you may have about the environmental analysis.
Thank you. Alexandra Soluk is next.
Can you see our posters of the wetlands, please? My name is Alexandra Soluk. I would like to first thank Councilman Labange and his staff for supporting us in our request for an EIR. And I'm going to start where we left off at the last hearing, which is on June 14th, at the Plum Committee hearing. At that hearing, Councilman Jack Weiss asked a very important question. He asked, "What is so different about this property that would require an EIR compared to all the other properties in San Fernando Valley?" Unfortunately, we did not have a chance to answer the question. The people that answered the question never visited the property. The difference between this property and everywhere else are the wetlands. This particular individual who owns the property during his escrow period had the wetlands filled in. Now, that's wrong. The reason they did it is so they could come in front of you and say they've done everything they can to protect the property, without admitting to all of the things that they did to put themselves in the upper bargaining position of destroying everything. We have the wetlands, we have a stream, we have three springs on the property, we have a vast riparian habitat, and we have sensitive coastal sagebrush on the property.
Thank you, Ms. Soluk.
If there's any situation anywhere in the city that requires an EIR, this is it under the laws of this city.
Thank you. Edward Belden is our next speaker. And after that will be John Soluk.
Good afternoon. My name is Edward Belden. I'm with Sapphoz Environmental. I'm the project manager. The city has appropriately determined, based on review of the entire record before, that the initial study, all the comments received, and that the proposed MND for public review and subsequent comments received, that the proposed development would not result in significant impacts on the environment. Many issues have been raised by the appellant's. All of them have been addressed and mitigated in the MND. No significant issues or unusual circumstances exist on this site to warrant anything other than a mitigated negative declaration. Outreach has been undertaken with all applicable regulatory agencies, including the California Department of Fish and Game and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who has regulatory authority over wetlands. They've all held their own judgment on this issue, and those issues have been resolved with them. Qualified professionals, registered engineers, hydrologists, and certified wetland delineators have worked on this and completed the documentation. The MND concludes mid-28 mitigation measures, and really significantly reduces all impacts below a level of significance.
Thank you. John Soluk is next, and then Maria Mejia will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is John Soluk. I reside right next to the property, so I'm an eyewitness to what's happened there over the years. There is a wetlands, there are a tremendous amount of waters there. There's a stream bed that flows down the entire length of Lancashire. It affects the entire neighborhood. Now, this is a unique property, in that what I'm asking the commission, the council, to do is basically support the Mulholland design plan. And there are rules in that plan that are to be followed. And one of the rules is that no constructions should take place within 100 feet of watercourses, repairing habitats and wetlands. The other rule is one that says basically within a parkland, and there's a parkland literally right next to this land, says, "You can't build within 200 feet of a parkland." So why bother to have those rules in there if they're not enforceable? This is a unique land, unlike other properties that come before you, okay? They don't have a parkland right next to them, you know, and they don't have wetlands that have been delineated by the experts that show on our maps over here. This is a unique piece of property that affects not only the immediate, but also the surrounding lands and neighborhood around it.
Thank you, sir.
It also used to be part of the Lon Chaney estate at one time, before it was subdivided.
Thank you.
And he kept his horses up there. And if you've read...
I can ask you to conclude, please.
1943, he went up there with his entire gang of students.
Thank you, sir. Maria Mejia is our final speaker. Thank you.
Good morning. But before I speak, I'd like to ask a procedural question, please, before my time starts. I'd like to ask for two and a half minutes, because the attorney for the project applicant spoke for about two and a half minutes.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Do two minutes, like we did with him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Maria Mejia, attorney for the Mulholland Outer Corridor Deer and Stream Sanctuary of Lancashire. What this case is about is about developing on a unique piece of property that consists of wetlands, riparian habitat, and streams. The other side tries to make this as if it's imposing a burden for a single-family resident. But in actuality, SEQA has a low threshold for preparing an EIR. Here, we have met that threshold. The standard is a fair argument based on substantial evidence. We have cited to case law that supports that an EIR may be required for a single-family residence. One case was, actually, two cases were attached to the letter that I submitted to you today. One case is called "Uphold Our Heritage," which is a 2007 opinion. On this property, not only do you have the wet area, you also have an array of wildlife, which includes bobcats, deer, and oaks. We had an expert testify and provide, not testify, but prepare reports that is in opposition to what the city has said with respect to the effect on the wetlands. This has not been appropriately considered by the city. Where experts disagree, SEQA requires an EIR. The stream bed alteration agreement has been based on inaccurate, incomplete information. Therefore, the fish and game was not provided with what they should have been provided with, and this invalidates that agreement. Finally, I'd like to say that Sapphoz prepared an inaccurate revised MND with failure to circulate it. Sapphoz is an agent and representative of the project applicant. It is not an independent party with independent judgment. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to ask that you grant the appeal, set aside project approval, and require an EIR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange.
My interest on this and working with my staff is the fact that it has a situation that is unique. But we all know that every parcel in Los Angeles is going to be called upon to be built. Even in my own, across the street from where Bridgette and I live, someone's going to be building a house. That happens in the reality of Los Angeles now. We don't want to deny anybody a right to build a house. There was an effort made by one of the residents to try to swap parcels. I wish that could be. I wish that certainly could be, that they could try to resolve it that way. I took a special interest in this, because just after the March 30th fire of this year, there was a sighting of deer right down on Lancashire into the Hollywood freeway area. That, I know, Jeanne Haruska of my staff was involved with Animal Services, trying to relocate it. This gentleman represents the Planning Department, and this gentleman tells us that these issues are pretty cut and dry. You know, I'm not necessarily a cut-and-dry individual when it comes to these. I like to help everybody, but we come to the challenge. Repeat what you feel as a recommendation is at this point, if you would.
The Director of Planning and the South Valley Area Planning Commission believe that the mitigated negative declaration prepared under SEQA is adequate. It adequately discloses all of the impacts, and it mitigates them to levels of insignificance.
Right. Members, I'm going to stand with the residents, okay, because I think they have a little bit of a joint point, but also the idea that maybe there's some land swap that could go there. But I know you heard from the Planning Department, and you have to weigh these decisions out as you see them, because it is unusual that a single-family dwelling would have this requirement. I think the fact that the deer came out of the hills after the fire encouraged me a little more to be a little this way than I normally am in listening to these issues. So with that in mind, I hope you have an understanding that the councilman of the district supports what would be a full EIR, but understands that the Office of the Planning Department, the Planning Director for the City of Los Angeles, the South Area Planning Commission has also denied that request after their study. So I'm at the conflict on that end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Anybody else wish to be heard on this? We have the motion to deny the appeal. Is it...
Well, I want to move, what the Planning Report is, if you can clarify that.
Jack?
Expect that, but...
Oh, no, I think the way Mr. Labange just handled the whole issue...
Okay, we have that before us. Please open the roll. So you're asking for yes or no vote, Mr.?
I'm telling you, you know, you've got to listen to sometimes those planning officers.
Okay, please keep the roll open.
I hope I don't get beat bad.
Okay.
Is the machine working?
It is. Everybody have their vote in? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, three noes.
So what do we do here?
So that does not pass.
So what happened?
It'll stay here until we get a majority. It'll be on the next agenda, or it can be reconsidered for a vote today. Okay? All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 46 was called special for cards for the public, and there is an amending motion that was circulated.
Okay.
Yes, I try to be a speaker and not a shouter. Sometimes I get worked up. Plus, there were a lot of people. I couldn't hear myself. Okay, 46, we are talking about, this is something very important, child safety relative to conducting a study on child safety in Los Angeles. I'd like to bring out Dr. Deming, the spirit of Dr. Deming, for a moment. The problem with this, don't do a study on child safety, do a study on how to improve child safety. We all know that child safety is an important issue. It's a little broad. That's the problem. Excuse me, if everybody could. It's a little broad to say, "conduct a study on child safety." It's kind of pointless. So if you can just, can Zuma Dogg have a friendly amendment? Just say, "to conduct a study on how to improve and enhance child safety in Los Angeles," and then today would truly be a great day in the city of Los Angeles. And for more of this, you can go to zumatimes.com, because you can't read any good local coverage in L.A. Times. Thank you, Los Angeles.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. And with that, Mr. Alarcon will be our speaker.
Well, members, it gives me great sadness to say that I absolutely agree with Mr. Zuma And in fact, I have an amending motion to do just that. It seeks to ask for a specific report by the commission as an amendment to this report to ask that the report by the commission include an analysis on child safety guidelines that currently exist within city departments, and I further remove that, I further move that the report also include recommendations for creating child safety guidelines for each department where appropriate. And my intent is exactly what Mr. Zuma Dogg said. I think that most of our departments probably have specific policies that are related to child safety, but in this case, I'm not sure that we have a comprehensive view with regard to child safety. And I just think we can probably enhance whatever we do do and also set our priorities more appropriately. And hopefully, we can review this on an annual basis should it be successful. So with that, I would urge your support for a friendly amendment to my own motion to expand it, to make certain that we are checking with the city departments to get them to enhance their services relative to child safety.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon, and that will be accepted as a friendly amendment without objection and as amended. If we can open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, like all items that'll go forth with today. Next item, please.
Item 48 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Number 48 is next. We'll go out to Van Nuys, hear first from Donna Periman on item number 48, then Sharon Brewer, and then Zuma Dogg.
I'm Donna Periman, newly-elected president of the Eric Garcetti Club, First Mutiny Councilman. You're wearing nice suits. I love it. In the public comment I mentioned about passing too many fee waiver events, especially wasteful, paying for films like Ratatouille, why couldn't they pay for it upfront? Why do we have to pay for it first in hopes that they pay back? And why do we have films like Independent Los Angeles Film Festival? $204,000 is too much money. Where do the wealthy go to have fun? Why do they need to ask for so much? Why do they approve all or none? Very bad fee waivers get passed this way. Events that are done before the fees are approved, they shouldn't start planning before they know are approved. Did they know it's--
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
--close the roll, tabulate the vote. Eleven ayes. Did they ever decide to remove a bad fee waiver? We can't forward these things. And lastly, I forgot to say previously, we need to get rid of the Oslo Peace Process as a step closer to getting rid of Israel and death to us all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker from Van Nuys as well.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, talking on item number 48, I believe, the specially fee waivers. Also, I put in a card for item number 13 about the park cameras to speak. On today's agenda, we have-- I ended up writing it down. I'm sorry. A number of items that are on the agenda, we have a total for today of $246,750. You have two that have, say that they will reimburse the city. Also, we have a number of items, 2457, that the event has passed. And I refer back to council file 05-2467-S1, a Garcetti mover, 2006, that states that specially event motions need to be approved by the council prior to the date of each event for liability reasons. Approved motions trigger the city's liability insurance coverage for the events and provide authorizations for street closures, temporary parking restrictions, and related actions associated with the special events. And so need to start taking and having these fee waivers done prior to the event. And I also don't understand why somebody would need to have a fee waiver of $204,000 where I'm sure that they have a lot of sponsors, or one that is $26,010. Again, the total so far for the month is $603,399 for up to today's specially event fee waivers. And could I speak on 13, please?
I'm sorry. That's two minutes for that. We had a public hearing on 13 in committee. It was not reopened, and we've already voted on that. But if you have any thoughts on that, we'd be happy if you forward them to my office as maker of the motion. Be happy to correspond with you on that. Zuma Dogg is our last speaker.
Yes, again, thank you, Zuma Dogg, on the record from zumatimes.com. And we're talking about special event fees. By the way, Sharon Brewer, nice to see you. Thanks for being the only one representing Van Nuys. That's a great point. However, a lot of times, he's come in for approval after the event. So, you know, that's kind of a little bit bureaucratic, if you ask me. Number E, we've got here, the Latino Laugh Festival. I like to say, I'm being serious here for a second, some people might get mad at me. Can't we just call it a Laugh Festival? I mean, did you see what happened over the weekend with the different communities? It's very divisive. Possibly just Laugh Festival, less divisive, less things that divide the community and more things that unite the community. Be a uniter, city council, not a divider. Just call it the Laugh Festival, and we can all laugh together in harmony and unity. Now, I'd like to talk about the Palisades High School graduation. Is Palisades in the city of Los Angeles, y'all? Oh, it is? Okay, people, we're paying for their graduation. And we also have coming up July 4th, we have the Maselin Avenue 4th of July special. I'd like to remind you, city council, this year, please put the fireworks up. Shoot them up in the air and not into the building. You'll save water. We need to conserve water. That will prevent the sprinklers from going off. And thank you. And also, let's see, the other thing here is overall, the nonprofits are-- I don't like these, a lot of these nonprofits, we need audits on. Lot of cronyism, a lot of padding, added jobs, and it's just a lot of subverting the money. There's a lot of money that could be going to other things in the community. And I'm going to waive my last 30 seconds to say, Laura Chick, if you're watching, we need an audit of all nonprofits before we give money in here. I have this nice little website you can go to and check out all the 901s. There's a lot of shadiness, a lot of duplication, and a lot of room for-- I'm running out. These meetings are going way too long, y'all. So I'm going to waive the last 12 seconds and just remind everybody to please go to zumatimes.com for local coverage that happens right here in city council. I spend 16 hours a day just so you can read about it when you come home. Thank you.
Thank you for those two seconds at the end. Closes our public comment. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 63 called special for cards from the public.
Yes, Mr. Weiss.
Sixty to be sent forth--
Yeah, everything's forthwith this week because of the end of the fiscal year, so we'll be sending all items that way. 63, Mr. Zuma Dogg.
You know, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm hogging up all the food on the buffet, but it is First Amendment, and I'm getting mine, y'all, and representing for you. Now, this is the important one. This is with the track maps, right? You got the wrong item up there. Can you put the right one up? It's track maps. And I'd like to say that if you read the L.A. Weekly article on smart growth, excuse me, I call it dumb growth, and also elegant density, I think it's disgusting the way this elegant density is. I'm just being a little facetious here. But basically, the plan is with these track maps, there's a lot of variances for EIR, as you just saw, that they try to give for zoning and for vacancy rates. And a lot of variances are given where they shouldn't be, and we're having, we don't have enough infrastructure. The plan is, by the way, the plan is in the city of Los Angeles to just put skyscrapers everywhere. They have eminent domain. They paved the way last week for an eminent domain ordinance that will allow them to knock on your door and say, "excuse me, if you don't make the improvements that we tell you to make, then we can take your house." And if you say, "we're not going to comply," and then they'll say, "well, you didn't comply." So they're going to get you either way, and it's going to be a lot of skyscrapers, and we don't have the infrastructure. So I'd like to say, please say no to these final track maps until we have an infrastructure impact. I want a complete assessment of transportation. We have no transportation for all these skyscrapers. The plan is, the city of Los Angeles, here's what city council thinks. We're going to keep building high density by approving all of these track maps, and then we'll build the subway to the sea. Then we'll build the metro lines and all the buses. They're going to make it so bad that you jump out of your cars and that you vote for the billions and billions and billions and billions of dollars in bond money to build the things that they haven't even approved yet. So I'd like to say, let's put a little chill on all the skyscrapers. I moved here from New York City because I liked Los Angeles. You're stripping away the culture. You're stripping away the community. You're gentifying everything. There's not enough police, there's not enough teachers, there's not enough sewers, there's not enough waste management, there's not enough roads, there's not enough anything, y'all. So say no to this and put some of this time into the infrastructure and assess service and service assessment.
Thank you very much. That closes our public comment on this item. If we can please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Is Mark Rothman still here? Ms. Perry, on item 49, I received this card after we voted on it, it's the reward motion in your council district, and--
I think he was on the--
Oh, he was on the other one. That was, okay, he was probably for 59. That was misidentified. Okay. Thank you. So with that, next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting or referral.
Those are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay. Now it's time for announcements, colleagues. Any announcements? Announcements gone once. Mr. Laban.
I just want to say, along with Mr. Zine, we were at the closing of the 75th Annual Conference of Mayors, which Mayor Viergoz was the host mayor. It was at the Observatory, and it was a tremendous event that the mayor's staff coordinated for the city and gave the city a great awareness to other mayors throughout the United States. It was a very good event. So thank the mayor's office and their staff, all of them, for that good program.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
I just want to announce that our West Area neighborhood councils having their elections on June 30th, Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Autobahn Middle School at 4,100 block of 11th Avenue.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Mr. Zine? Ask people to please rise for our adjournments today. Ms. Perry, if I can ask us all to rise? Thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Al Langer, a guru from complications of old age at 94. I know Mr. Reyes joins me in this today, council member in the area, as well as Mr. Zine, who I believe is the council member for Mr. Langer there in Woodland Hills. The Langer's Delicatessen, which we just sampled days ago, the succulent hand-cut pastrami on hot rye bread with Goulden's mustard, won praise as the finest hot pastrami sandwich in America or the world, depending on the critic. As Al Langer passed away, we were able to celebrate the 60th anniversary nearly two weeks ago with a celebration that included accolades for the deli's food and its survival. Long after the Jewish community had moved on from the MacArthur Park area and other business owners packed up and left, driven away by the neighborhood's high crime rate at one point in time, Langer kept his business open at 7th and Alvarado Streets adjacent to MacArthur Park. And Mr. Reyes, I know, intends to rename that intersection, Langer Square, in his honor next year. Langer's persistence paid off in 1993. He survived those lean years. When the Metro Red Line subway opened its westbound stop not far from the deli, the subway rescued Langer's Delicatessen, and folks joked that it was the Pastrami Express from downtown. It deposited long lines of hungry downtown workers to its door at lunchtime. He was born January 6, 1913, in Newark, New Jersey, to Russian immigrants because his birth certificate was not registered until January 23rd. The later date was used as his official birthday. But he learned the deli business early, earning money to pay for his $35 bar mitzvah by working at a local delicatessen, thus learning a trade that would last him a lifetime. Langer applied his trade after graduating from high school, traveling to New York's Catskills in the summer and Miami Beach in the winter to work at delicatessens. He finally moved to California in 1937, eventually settled in Los Angeles. While working at a deli, he met and married Jean Grey Sirma Stern, and the couple had two children. After a stint in the army and a few unsuccessful business endeavors, he took over a small 12-seat deli shop to open Langer's Delicatessen in 1947. Although the couple worked long hours, the deli soon became a gathering place in the Jewish community and an important stop for new residents. He once said, "The Jewish people, when they came here, came to those boarding houses, the hotels, the small ones, gesturing towards MacArthur Park. They come here to decide where they're going to live. They rent a hotel room, and then they'd be out in the living room in the park all day long." And as the restaurant prospered, he was able to buy adjacent properties and expand it to deli in '52 and 1968, upgrading the small shop to what's now 135-seat, 4,300-square-foot enterprise. In the late '80s and '90s, as the area became Latino and poverty unfortunately took away much of the prosperity in the area, he adjusted by changing the deli's hours and offering curbside service and reached out within the community, and it's a much beloved Latino spot as well as Jewish as well. His son, Norm Langer, who began working in the deli in 1962 and assumed more responsibility for day-to-day operations with the passing years, now runs the business that remains a family affair. And in his later years, Al Langer continued to spend part of his day at the deli, reading his newspaper, greeting customers, watching the cycles of his customers' lives. And I know many of us in this room were blessed. He said, "It's fascinating," in 1986. He said, "They come in as children, they get married, they bring in their children, and then the older people that used to come in, they disappear. Little by little, they're gone." While Al Langer may physically be gone today, he is very much with us, and his legacy lives on, not only in one of the tastiest sandwiches anywhere in the world, but the way that he served a community, a city, a people. And he certainly will be missed and beloved by all of us. May he rest in peace. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of private first-class Justin Verdeja, passed away June 5th. He grew up in East Los Angeles, attended Garfield High School, and dreamed of joining the LAPD SWAT team. He was a member of the 2nd Battalion 12th Infantry Regiment, based in Fort Carson, Colorado, and he was awarded the Bronze Star. He is survived by his mother and his five brothers. I also wanted to adjourn in the memory of Antonio Aguilar. I know this was done this past meeting, which I was not able to attend, but I wanted to mention, as was mentioned by Mr. Alarcon, I actually happen to have been born in Zacatecas, and he is from Zacatecas, not too far from my hometown. And I wanted to just raise it again because although we don't hear his songs on the radio often, many of us don't, probably haven't, not as familiar with him, but given the diversity in the city of Los Angeles, it's impacted the lives of thousands of thousands of people. And he certainly was a pioneer, one of the first to come to the United States to attempt to perform what's known as ranchera music. And he, along with Jorge Negrete, Pedro Infante, and others, continued the tradition of ranchera music here in the United States, which eventually went back and got more popular in Mexico after it was originally made popular in the United States with the many migrants who came. The death has been felt, not only in Mexico but throughout the world. In fact, in the day they carried his body to his birthplace, there were over 500 bands who took over a highway and traveled mile after mile, playing his songs over and over again. It's a true loss, and I feel it personally, just given the closeness to my hometown relatives who knew his family and someone who is my greatest singer. We have his son, Pepe Aguilar, who now is a Los Angeles resident, actually lives here in Los Angeles in the valley. in Los Angeles in the valley. Pepe Aguilar, who has taken up where his father left off, and I know, it must have been mentioned this past council meeting, how much he supported family values. And the way he started that and showing that was when he had his rodales, and he would sing with his family on horses, and he started that tradition, but he would always end his concerts advising parents and families about the importance of staying together and being together, and that's what was also great about Antonio Aguilar, not only his music and the great smiles he put on many of our faces and allowed us to dance to his music, but also what he meant to us as a real role model and humanitarian.
Thank you very much. Are there adjourned motions? Mr. Laban.
That's a very nice word, Mr. Weezer. You speak of family, these families are tragically saddened by the death of their loved ones. Serving the United States Armed Forces Army Staff Sergeant Gregory P. Gagarin, raised here in Los Angeles, attended, graduated from John Marshall High School of Filipino descent. He's 38 years old. At 19, he served in Operation Desert Sorm in 1991. This is his third tour of duty in Iraq in the 1st Battalion 3rd Brigade, and was planning to build a home in his native Philippines. He's survived by his wife Alma, his son Troy, and daughter Natasha. Also, members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Alexandra Alexine, who is an immigrant from Russia who joined and served in the United States Army, member of the 6th Squadron of the 9th Cavalry, 3rd Brigade Combat Team of Fort Hood, Texas. He was 23 years old. Both these soldiers died in Iraq. He's survived by his mother, sister, and fiance, and his father. I ask that we all adjourn in memory of these great soldiers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laban. All members on that. Mr. Zein?
I want to join on the acknowledgement, adjourned of Al Langer. The man had such a sharp mind at 94 years of age, and we were there where the street was blocked off, and he had the smile on his face, and all the people that showed up for that acknowledgement of 60 years in business in the city of Los Angeles. He was rather weak, but a very, very solid, sound mind. He mentioned his wife that passed away, and he was so pleased to see the turnout that showed up for the commemoration, the 60 years, and his son, Norm, who runs the business, I've known for a number of years, and I'm sure that his son and his family, his granddaughter, the loss that they're experiencing, but it was such a positive day, and I'm so pleased that we were there to share it and to acknowledge, along with Supervisor Zevio Slasky, other representatives of government, to acknowledge the work that that family had done in that particular community, never gave up on that community, and was always there. But to see Al stand up and go to the podium and to speak with his solid mind and his thoughts, it was very impressive. May Al Langer rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We'll next meet tomorrow, June 27th, here in council chambers. We'll see you then. This meeting of Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.